Ends in two minutes. Please take your seats. Again, the school board work session begins in two minutes. The school board work session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board work session begins in one minute.
Good morning. I now call the October 20th, October 2nd, 2025 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. Mirroring and modeling how our students begin each day, I ask that you please pause with us for a moment of silence. Thank you. I will now read our board commitment statement. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success. At this time, I'd like to ask Attorney Powers to explain the rules for the public workshop. Good morning, Attorney Powers.
Good morning, Madam Chair. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. The board, in compliance with the Sunshine Law, the board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the board clerk. After the board and superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the board clerk will call the speaker's name in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting, so speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Good morning, Ms. Martinez Young. Can you please provide the proof of publication?
The notice for the October 2nd, 2025 work session was published in the Ocala Gazette on September 19th, 2025. Proof of publication has been attached to board docs under proof of publication.
Thank you. Board, at this time, will move into item 4.1, the superintendent's search. I would like to invite Mr. Adams with HYA Associates to the podium to begin a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the school board. I'm Bill Adams, Vice President with Hazert Young &amp; Atiyah, HYA, the search firm that will be working with you to assist with the selection of the successor superintendent.
Hold on just one moment. We need to check your audio. Can you move the, the, there we go. There we go.
Audio okay now?
Just about 30 seconds here. I'll get a thumbs up from the booth to.
Okay, yes, I was, did you see me concentrate?
Just to the degree you can, make sure that angle, that's angled directly at your mouth. That might help.
Okay.
Okay, let's try that.
Attorney Powers.
I'll try it again. I'm, I'm Bill Adams, Vice President, Hazert Young &amp; Atiyah.
Understood. Okay. Please continue.
Okay, thank you. We're looking forward to working with you, and we're excited and honored that our firm was selected to, to assist with the successor superintendent's search. We have, and I, I have to introduce, and it's important that I introduce, Senior Associate Stacy Adams. Stacy Adams is a member of our team. Will also be joined by Dr. Monica Brown. We have about 130 associates nationwide. The two of us are, will be the Florida-specific contact. We came up from Collier last night. And by full truth and, and information, Stacy Adams is also Mrs. Adams. We are husband and wife, so that's a full disclosure at this point. By way of background, I was a New Jersey superintendent for 36 years and have been involved in the search work since 2006, while still seated as a superintendent, and with Hazert Young &amp; Atiyah since 2014. Stacy also joined the firm around 2014. She comes from the private sector of public education and has an MBA in, in terms of her background. We've done, as a firm, over 35-plus years, about 2,000 executive leadership searches in education. This particular team has done work in Brevard, Broward, Collier, twice, 11 years apart. And we've also done work in Indian River and Duval County over the years. So we're very familiar with not only Florida, having actually resided here since 2008, but also with the requirements and some of the challenges in terms of recruitment. This morning, we'd like to cover 15 items, and it sounds daunting. It's not. You've had, you have copies of the agenda, and I'm going to follow that agenda right now. And there's two or three items where we need to really just focus and get some direction from you, the board, so we can begin immediately the search process. So as we look at the board, the agenda itself, we've, we've already been able to establish our, our direct board liaison will be our president, Mrs. Conrad, will be working certainly with Elena Martinez Young, the executive assistant to the board, and LaTisha Morant will probably be our primary contacts, you know, throughout the process. You have our contact information on the agenda in terms of the email addresses, and we'll assure you that all of you have our cell phone numbers so that you can reach out to us at any time during the process, although most of the contact will go through the board chair. So that's really our initial opening part. We will be talking about community engagement, and Stacy's specifically going to be talking about that. But would you like me to review the search process and the four stages before we begin that part of it?
The four stages of, I'm sorry?
Search process.
The four stages of the search process.
Yes, sure. That's sure. I, I shared with you before we started, so I'm going to have a hard time today without
I'm happy.
All, all of the, all of the audio, I'm, I'm going to really struggle today. So yes, please do a brief overview.
Can we take a recess? If, if we feel like there's a solution, can we take a recess?
Mr. Christian.
Or is it not going to get any better?
Let's take five.
I would agree. I would prefer we take a brief recess, see if we can't get this audio worked out so we can better hear your presentation. Board, with that, we're going to take a recess at 9:09 a.m. Be back with you briefly.
And I, I think maybe even for him to repeat what he already shared.
Do we have an alternative? No, do we have an alternative to these speakers? Is there like?
A backup?
There's audio coming, but it's exceptionally low.
I would, are you all able to hear me fine?
No, it's.
You're not, okay.
No.
I was going to say that if.
Testing check. That's already better.
If need be, we could, we could place him at my spot.
But the, but the community still cannot hear, and that's what we want to make sure, that the audio is clear for the community.
Then that's why I was asking.
Is it not on YouTube right now? Okay, yeah, that's an issue.
Yeah. Yeah, mine's loud right, mine sounds loud right now.
It's gotten better, yeah, than it was. I just know too.
Check.
It's much better.
Mine's better.
I just know that if I can't hear them, like Lori, there's no way.
Hey, can you have him to say something?
Lori, will you speak into that mic?
Lori.
Did you hear that?
Can you hear me? Oh.
Yes.
Now we're back. That's a lot better.
Have, have him speak into it there as well.
Okay.
Testing, is the audio okay now?
It's better. It's better. It's, it's, it's louder, yet muffled, but it's better.
Testing, one, two, three.
Sorry. That's a lot of volume.
I'm going to suggest you. Trying to find Kevin. Not yet. Mr. Adams, we're going to ask you to start from the top.
We're close.
Start at the beginning because our.
Lot, but yeah, that's, right, right.
We've gone to the top of the scale.
But we can actually hear them. Yes, we're back at hearing it, yes. Just levels.
YouTube is fine, they said.
Is that any better? Oh, there's a little better.
Yeah.
We want it to be just right.
Well, the, the chair advised me to speak slowly. Do you know how hard that is for a former superintendent?
If he gets this all worked out, you won't have to.
Testing, check, one, two.
Do you hear us?
Testing, one, two, three.
Can't tell.
Testing, testing.
Testing, one, two.
What about a low voice?
Testing, check. Checking, one, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Kevin. No. I can't do harmony when I'm singing the melody. It is, today's Kevin's birthday. Happy birthday. Aren't you happy we're having audio issues on your birthday? Terrific.
That's right.
Do you want me to still talk? Testing, check, one, two, three. Checking, checking, checking. Testing, check.
We're going to sing. We're in recess, so.
Oh, okay. Aren't they all? Usually, yes.
I feel like we had a, we had a run of calm, and now we're back to having those.
Testing, check, one, two, three. Checking, one, two. That's funny. Okay. Hello? Hello?
No.
No.
It's not.
Okay, that, whoa, okay. Is it a mic, is it a cable?
Did you say you could hear us, Ms. Connor? Oh, we're live on YouTube.
We're still live on YouTube.
That's right. Everybody got to hear your beautiful voice.
So we're going to have the greatest hits compared.
I cannot wait to see.
Oh, there we go. The, yes, yes. That's way better.
Sir, would you say something?
Testing, check, one, two, three.
Testing, check, one, two, three.
I think we're cooking with gas.
YouTube will be very happy.
Testing, check, one, two, three.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you. And we're going to restart everything?
Yes.
Take it to the, take it from the top. On the cue.
Welcome us back from recess at 9:16. Thank you for being patient with us while we fixed some audio issues. And Mr. Adams, we welcome you back to the podium. If you will start from the very beginning, we'd appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the school board. It's our pleasure, representing Hazert Young &amp; Atiyah, commonly known as HYA, to join you in a partnership for your successor superintendent's search. I'm Bill Adams, Vice President with HYA, a former superintendent of 36 years. What may be a little bit unique about that, 36 years in the same district as superintendent, that doesn't happen as much today. In fact, it doesn't happen almost at all today. But times have changed, and the challenges for school boards, the challenges for school staff, the challenges for parents and our, our students and children growing up today are great. And so as the times change, we need to change in terms of leadership and leadership style. Just to introduce our team and to let you know that HYA has done about 2,000 executive searches over 35-plus years. I'm joined today by Stacy Adams. Stacy's a senior associate with HYA, and she is also Mrs. Adams. So we are partners in business and in life, and most days, that works very well for us. There are some times when there are some challenges, but we work together, we believe, extremely well. Dr. Monica Brown, a former superintendent of 11 years and has been with us in our East Coast team for about seven years, will be working directly with us as well, and will be involved in some of the stakeholder input sessions. So that's, that's our team. That's, that's who we are. We have done other Florida searches over the years, the most recent being Collier. And Collier, by the way, for the second time, and you would say, well, Collier, well then, how come a second time? But they were 11 years apart. So we think that's important. We've also done the state superintendent's search in Florida, the Commissioner of Education, twice. With that, generally, our contact person on the board is the board chair. We generally then work with the executive assistant to the board as well as the HR person. And that's very important in terms of team, as well as our birthday person today, who will be very important as, as we promote and keep the community informed as to the search and the search process. One of the things that we like to do at the very beginning of the search is just take a few minutes and review the search process. There are four stages. The first stage is engagement. It begins with a planning meeting with the school board. That's today's meeting. About three weeks to six weeks from, from today, we like to then bring back all of the stakeholder input and provide you with what we call a leadership profile report on what we've learned about Marion County. And then also, at that same time, present to you a set of desired characteristics for the successor superintendent. From there, we begin the actual recruitment process. Recruitment will be the, the part of the process where we're out in the country, literally, recruiting applicants based on your desired characteristics. Those desired characteristics will drive everything that we do from, from that point on. During the recruitment process, we'll look at internal, external, in-state, out-of-state to try to match those desired characteristics for Marion County. Once the recruitment process is completed, there'll be a series of three meetings with the school board, you, the board. The first meeting, about 48 hours before that meeting, will present all of the applications and all of the resumes. And then we'll also present five documents on each of what we would call the slated or preferred candidates that most closely resemble your desired characteristics. Usually, and we'll, we'll talk about this a little bit later in the agenda, usually that will involve somewhere between eight and 10, eight and 12 potential candidates who most closely resemble the desired characteristics. From that, we'll ask you to do a paper screen, and we'll help you with that with a process we call the Delphi process that we'll, we'll talk about later. It's all done, obviously, in public. And what will happen after that, you'll narrow that field perhaps to five, perhaps to six or seven, and then begin the interview process. We'll assist with that. We'll be present. We'll help develop questions. And then from there, after that first process, after the first interview process, we'll ask you, using the Delphi technique, to again narrow the field to perhaps two to three top candidates, and then a second round of interviews. Once that's completed, we'll do a third party, and you, you'll have, as part of the five documents we present, a 360 reference review. But we'll also then, as you get down to a conditionally selected candidate, do a, actually, a background investigation with a third-party vendor that we use. That'll be not only the required criminal, civil, and so forth, but financial, driving record, credential verification, media review, and the one today that sometimes creates some problems is social media review. That's part of that, that whole process. Then concurrently, you'd begin contract negotiations and then a final selection. Stacy will go over that calendar that we proposed, and then whatever adjustments you want to make to that calendar in a few minutes. Once you've made your selection, we'll assist with transition. That leadership profile report will be used to help develop the desired characteristics. It'll be used to help develop questions for, for applicants that are interviewed, and it'll be used to help with transition. Once you've made your selection, we'll meet with you again, and you can use that to set goals with the successor superintendent. And, and we'll also offer, we do also offer a process to assist the successor superintendent during the first year in, in the position. That's the search process. Are there any questions regarding the, the four stages, which again are engagement, recruitment, selection, transition?
Any questions from the board? Okay. We're ready to move on.
Thank you. Community engagement.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice to meet all of you. So as Bill indicated, the first stage is engagement, and as a part of that, it's important for everyone to know that the intent here is to get as much input as possible in our efforts to develop the leadership profile report and the desire characteristics document. As you can see, those two documents will be extremely critical as we move through the process. And as Bill also mentioned, at the end of the engagement phase, after they're presented to you, the school board, they will be made available for all of the community via the district website. So with that in mind, the first part of the engagement process is to schedule interviews with each of you. We will send out a calendar tomorrow. You'll receive an email from me with a link to a calendar. To sign up for an interview, you can contact us, or we can be in contact either by phone or by Zoom. The second part of the engagement is the focus groups, or the focus groups, I should say. In front of you are a list of suggested groups. Now, there are, it's not an opportunity to have a focus group with every individual constituency group that's in your community. However, what is important is that every community member be invited to at least participate in one of the sessions. And so you'll see, if we can jump to the end, we will be doing community forums. I will, it's our suggestion that I work closely with Ms. Martinez Young to identify the specifics, but as we walk through this list, I'll read them to you, please take note if there's a constituency group that has not been listed here that you want to make sure receives an invitation to come to one of the groups. So as we already identified board members individually, if you would like the interim superintendent, administrators at the district level, your principals and assistant principals, your support staff, your collective bargaining, bargaining unit or units, leadership, teachers, of course, I'll call out to all teachers, students are most important. This should be prioritized at the very top, to do a focus group with students, your PTI, PTO councils, your business leadership, your faith-based organization, and other parent, school, business, or service, or community groups. In particular, those are the groups that we'd like your suggestions for. And then community forums. Typically, based on the number that's allotted by contract, we'll work out community forums. Usually, we suggest two to three, two being virtual, and one being in person. So with that list in mind, is there, are there any groups? to one of the groups?
Board, do you have any suggestions for additional groups? Yep. Dr., hold on one second. Dr. James?
Thank you. The only suggestion I would see here that we could potentially add is we have a pretty active political community in this town, and so proactively engaging our REC's and then DEC's, I think, would be appropriate to make sure that everyone is feeling involved and has opportunity to provide their insight. So those are two that I could think of. I don't certainly want to, we have a T-part, or a T-party organization as well in the community, so maybe working with someone outside of us to identify who those could be. But I do believe that having a political group forum of sorts to come together and give them opportunity to share what they desire in a superintendent would be proactive in the dialogue in the community.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Reverend Cummings?
Madam Chair, I was just going to suggest that we did this process the last time, there were several groups that the board members individually may have requested, requested be included. And I think since we're going to be meeting with them individually, that we give those, those, those individual groups to them, as well as look back at the last superintendent search and see who was included in that process. Because as she just, as Dr. James just said, there were some political groups, there were some civic groups in the community, there are several entities that were included that I don't think we want to exhaust our time this morning, list them now, but we can get a list and get to you.
Absolutely, thank you. We'll make sure we connect. I believe that I can work with Ms. Martinez Young to secure that list that was used last time, and we'll speak individually.
Thank you. Yes, board members.
Thank you. I would also like to make sure we include our nonprofit organizations. We have such deep connections and partnerships, including them, I think would be vital.
And Chair, if I can, I, while I can appreciate the individual conversation, that means that then we will have to come back together as the board to then delineate which groups we're going to meet with. So if we had the conversation now, we would hash it out, but if we have it privately, you're going to have to come back before us to present, I would imagine, right? Or if one board member wants a group represented, is that just going to be added to the list? What would the way of work be?
The way it worked last time was, once the individual board members gave that list of whoever their individual requests were, that whole list just came back to the board and we looked at it. Nobody kicked anybody out or anything like that.
Okay, okay. Just trying to understand that. I will just offer, board, I don't, because the interim superintendent has given us notice that she intends to apply for the job, I'm not sure that it would be appropriate for her to have an individual meeting with the firm, seeing as she's shown intent to apply, so.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell, any input?
I'm just taking in the thoughts that others have. I appreciate the concept, first of all, of the political groups being engaged. There is chatter starting in our community about going back to an elected superintendent, which obviously is not the direction this board is going to take, but because that conversation is occurring, I think the political groups are important to engage early on in the process. Additionally, with the nonprofits, there are several that are in our schools every day, and so that would be helpful to hear specific perspective. I also appreciate the student conversation. We do have student board representatives that we already have, they are seniors, though. So it's possible that we would need, how those students would be selected to be participating in a focus group would be an interesting conversation for me. Just wondering if we're, because I mean, the youngest learners are going to be the ones that are going to have the most impact, certainly because of the long-term potential of a, of a superintendent, and your seniors are going to be the ones on the way out and not having engagement. So I, I think that this is a, a pretty good list. I think there probably are potentially others that will come to mind, but I appreciate the thoughts of fellow board members, because some things I hadn't considered have already been brought up. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, Ms. Rower.
Speaking of students, absolutely, and perhaps the, the way to capture at least some of their voice would be through the SGA and, you know, the, some of the student-led organizations. Fellowship of Christian Athletes come to mind, you know, student clubs could possibly, you know, have the opportunity to be, you know, queried and, and participate in the survey and provide input. We've really been very big on making sure that student voice is represented through Dr. Brewer and, and our previous superintendent, Dr. Gullett, and it has really been fruitful. So, yes, including them deeply.
Absolutely. We see that as a priority. Typically, what we suggest is to have the student leaders of those different clubs and organizations that you just mentioned as a part of the invitation of the group. Also know that students are listed, I'm jumping ahead here, on the survey, and so depending upon your district protocols and policies, they can also participate. If they're not included in the focus group, they can participate in the survey. So it's very important to us to make sure that we get a cross-section of all of the students, that there's representation and student voice from across the district.
Chair?
Yes.
And, and I also know we have teachers listed here, and certainly we want any teachers to participate as much as they want, but I think the Golden Apple Academy would be a really good group of teachers that we could use. The Public Education Foundation, obviously, is our direct support organization, nonprofit, but they do have a group of teachers that are our teacher of the year candidates every year, and so that's, certainly some of them have moved on to administration and different things, so they might be picked up in different ways, but I think the teachers that are still teachers in Golden Apple would be a great resource.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anything further? Okay, I think we have a really great starting point.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
The next part of community engagement is the survey. We have a, a research-based survey that, that we utilize, and as part of our proposal, it, it does include the survey going out both in English and Spanish. There are seven groups, or six groups, that we can disaggregate that, that survey to. We'd like to get some input initially on how you would like us to, once we go up with that survey, which would likely be at the beginning of November, to, to divide into whatever, however people identify themselves. So we give a suggestion, it could be an MCPS administrator or supervisor, regardless of central office or, or building level. It could be an MCPS or Marion County community member. We like to include the, the parents or, and/or guardians of current students as a group that can be disaggregated. And then your, both your certificated staff, which would include all your teachers and staff that require a certificate for the position they hold, other than a supervisor or administrator. And the same for the non-certificated staff that provide all of the support services that, that do not require a, a Florida Department of Education certificate for the position. They're the general six that we recommend, but do you, do you have any others or anything specific that you would want us to disaggregate within that six?
Any, yes.
Just for the, the board consideration, I, I think in light of the fact that we have only had five years of an appointed superintendent, I actually would be interested in hearing from retired MCPS employees. So we have a very large retirement community in our, in our community as well. Apart from being a community business member, are you retired from MCPS? And I think that would be an interesting group to hear from, specifically just because of the experiences they may have, they've had through the years. But if, that's up for board discussion, if you guys feel comfortable with that.
And Madam Chair, that was one of the groups, the Retired Educators Association was one of those groups that was included last time. That's why I suggested that we pull the list, because some of the same people that you guys are naming were on that list.
Thank you very much, Reverend Cummings. Anything else? Okay.
My, my only question with the retired group, obviously from a focus group, we could, we can address that. When we disaggregate the survey, I can only disaggregate the six groups. So how, how would you want us to report that out? We have a, a category called community member, business person, retiree.
What, I'm, just so I understand, so when the survey opens, the individuals are choosing their, they're self-determining their classification?
Correct.
Okay. Then yes, I, I think that would be the most appropriate place to tack it on. I don't necessarily think we should supplant a, or substitute a retiree category for one of the ones that's already present here. So that would be the most obvious place to add it as an option or, or whatever, yeah.
Maybe, I have a suggestion. Like, for example, on the top one, administrator supervisor, you could say, you know, current administrator supervisor, retired administrator supervisor, or something to, I don't know, maybe that would then expand it into a seventh category. I don't know if you can, I guess I'm interested to know why six? Like, how come we couldn't do seven? Just, I'm visualizing a drop-down menu, where the person would click and self-identify, you know, "I'm a student."
Well, we'd have to customize a, a research-based survey, and it only, the, the way it's set up, we only have six categories. We can, you can pick any six, however you want to define people.
Understood. I agree about not supplanting with one that's already here, because they're all important, but apparently we have a box that we need to operate in.
Well, I guess I also would want clarification on what is, I mean, other than the obvious, what is the, why are there two categories for a non-certified staff other than supervisor and certified staff other than supervisor?
You could do all staff. Frequently, we see differences, especially in terms of staff needs, staff retention efforts and so forth, whether we're working with certificated or non-certificated staff. That's up to you, the board.
Is there not a way we can add another question, though, to more define their roles? So couldn't those two be combined to say staff, non-administrator, and then there's another question that is a drop-down that says type of staff, and they can put par professional, teacher, is that not a possibility?
It's, it's not a possibility without customizing the survey, and it, and there's, there are costs to do that.
Okay.
They, they've built a tool that they're using around the country, and so this tool gives us this option and this option only?
Well, then my recommendation, board, would be that we just have a staff, non-administrator category, and then a retiree, a retiree of MCPS category, if we want to capture that thought pattern. I mean, I, I personally believe people are going to be confused as to whether they're checking non-certified or certified anyways. Because they're a certified par professional, so I think probably what that means is a certified teacher. Is that a correct statement? Anyone who holds a certificate in anything. So if I'm a certified electrician working for Marion County Public Schools, I would check certified staff?
No.
Okay.
Anyone who holds a Florida Department of Education certificate.
That's what I thought that meant. So I think that there would probably be confusion around that anyways, so my recommendation would be we just do staff, non-administrative, and then we do retiree from MCPS. That would be my recommendation, board.
Yes.
I would agree with that. I, I think that there will be too much confusion with the way the words are right now. So we have administrators, and then we have staff, and then we have retired MCPS employees of any level.
Of any kind. And then we have community members, parents, and students. I think that's a great mix.
Okay. Ms. Rower?
Is that possible?
Yes.
Okay. Struggling a little over here.
Well, not with that. I'm, I'm fine with what's been proposed. And we have a little elephant in the room in this district, and I'll just go ahead and say it. People are very suspicious of responding to surveys. They wonder who really gets to see the information, how it may be used or abused against them in the future. You know, that's just truth. And as we move forward in this process, it's going to be our task as, as a district and communication to help reassure our own employees that if they really want to have a voice, because we're going to be taking this very seriously. It's, it's not cheap to do, it's very time-consuming, and they've just got to weigh in and be reassured that it's safe to do so. Is that something you've experienced in other districts, hesitation like that?
Actually, it's a very good point that, that you make, both in the focus groups and in the survey. I'll, I'm going to go a little bit deeper, perhaps, in terms of response. For the survey, number, first, we do not check or keep IP addresses. So the people that complete the survey do so anonymously through HYA. So district staff, just internal people have no access to that information. So it is, it's totally done blind. We do ask the question out front with the six groups that I, I think we have agreement on moving forward with, that people identify, for instance, someone says, "I'm a parent of a student attending the school district and I'm a teacher." We ask them to identify how they most identify. Do you identify as a parent or do you identify as a teacher? So that, that's, that's that part of the survey. The survey itself, we provide the information by category, those six categories, that's it. So there are no names attached. One of the reasons we don't use an open-ended question is so that we don't have to go back and redact student names, staff names, and so forth. So that's, that's all done as part of it. Also, when we do focus groups, both in-person and virtual, we never record names. When we do virtual, we only allow the chat to us. We have actually seen people take screenshots of chat going back and forth and then publishing those screenshots. So we have, we've taken steps to protect that in, in, in terms of both virtual and in-person, so that we get as much unfiltered information as possible. And we think that's, that's important. And that student category that, that we mentioned, again, it all depends on your district protocols on allowing students to take surveys. Collier County had 5,000 students respond to their survey, roughly 50,000 students.
Can I ask a question? Is the student number required when completing the student survey?
No.
So I understand that's an identifying factor, but I also can understand that people complete surveys. Is, is there a way to minimize people not completing the survey more than once, or...
That, that question is frequently asked, and yes, there are ways, but to do that, we'd have to track IP addresses. That's one problem. The second problem is, most of your schools have, have one IP address, and if we limited it to one IP address, we might cut out a whole group of people. We have found, there, there are two things. We have found that if there's a particular group of, of stakeholders that feel very strongly, they may load the, 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 the number of documents that most likely are going to present their majority point of view. The other thing that we do have is we use a software that will allow us to track certain responses to see if patterns are being formed. And if they are, then we'll, we'll check that, that more deeply. But we've administered this literally hundreds of times and have not found that to be a problem. It's, it's always a question to ask, and it's a very appropriate question to ask.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate it. It shows the years of experience you have dealing with this. And again, if we're, we're going to do it, it's important for everyone to feel that this is an absolutely safe and straightforward process and that we are 100% serious about getting the input. So this would be the opportunity, or the opportunity... So, this would be the opportunity, or the opportunities that you're presenting. Because it's hard, when you, you put it all out there, and then you get kind of a tepid response, but then you sure get a lot afterwards, you know? And, and I would just like to try to steer that in a more positive direction, if we can.
Thank you. Well, with the, uh, adjustments, uh, you've made, uh, in terms of the, the six, uh, categories, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll make that to make sure that we get the retiree group in, and, uh, we'll, we'll move forward with that.
So you've just hit on the perfect segue, thank you, in that it's communication, um, to all of the stakeholders in the community. Um, as we all have, um, met, uh, Kevin, and, um, his birthday today, we will be working closely with him, um, to make sure that all information about the process is communicated, including those documents, the survey report, the desired characteristics, and the leadership profile are made available, um, to the community. Typically, the focal point is the district website, right? We suggest a, um, separate and unique page on the district website to communicate the calendar, you'll see the timeline, the opportunities to be involved in the engagement phase, the survey link as well, links to, um, if there's, well, it says here, links to other feedback instruments, and, uh, job, uh, profile, or the leadership profile is what we call it, um, on the, on the website. Um, in addition to that, we also recommend, um, getting the word out about the process through all your socials. Um, so, I will, again, be working close with Kevin on that front, and any other, uh, communication channels that the district uses to communicate to, um, stakeholder groups. Um, we also encourage, when we have the dates and times set up for the community forums in particular, um, that everyone in the community be involved in promoting the community forums. So, obviously, that includes all of you, um, on the Board, and, as well as anyone who, um, feels compelled to put it out there, to get the word out, not only to the, uh, community forums, but also to the survey. Let's spread the word, let's get those voices heard, um, and do everything that we can, um, uh, you know, inside out, upside down, um, high and low, um, to get that word out to the community. So I just wanted to review those different mediums and channels, again, working tightly with Kevin. Um, is there any, uh, other comments that you want to ensure are included here?
All right, saying none, nope.
Okay, great, thank you. All righty, then flip it.
The, the next item, uh, on, on our, uh, agenda is, uh, the number of slated candidates. And I mentioned at the outset, um, we don't know how many applicants, uh, there, there will be. Uh, we do know that typically in Florida, Minnesota, and Ohio, we get fewer applicants because of the information becoming, uh, public when, when people, uh, submit their applications. Um, generally, we recommend, and this is, and, and because we don't know the number of applicants yet, that we present at least six, maybe 10, 12, uh, that most closely resemble your desired characteristics. Uh, obviously, the more applicants we present, as we get to a tier-two or a tier-three level applicant, they're the ones that do not have, or most closely resemble the desired characteristics that you've identified. So, uh, we, we just like to have a feel going out. Are you comfortable with six, 10, 12, uh, applicants? You will have every application, every resume, uh, and, uh, we will have a, um, spreadsheet, uh, and, uh, we certainly can answer any questions as to why we didn't present someone. You, the Board, always have the option to add somebody from the candidate pool that we didn't present, as long as a majority of you, uh, want to do that. We, however, do not guarantee that person as part of our guarantee, because we, uh, we felt that through our vetting process, that they didn't meet the criterion. But you have that option, and, once that person is entered, they have the same opportunity as, uh, anyone else that applies. So any feel for the, the number of slated applicants? For those applicants, you will have their letter of interest based on the desired characteristics, their resume, their completed, uh, frontline application through our system, not through, uh, uh, yours. Uh, they'll have a self-introduction. How would you want Bill Adams to introduce you to the Marion County School Board? One-page, double-spaced, don't cheat, about three paragraphs. Tells you a lot about a person. And then the last, uh, document is a, uh, what references said, that 360 reference check, which minimally should include, uh, a person that the individual directly reports to. That may be the school board chair, or the school board. Uh, it, uh, a, a person who is a direct report to the individual. Uh, s- some stakeholders that have received services as a direct result of the individual's work, whether it's superintendent, or, or whatever that role is. Uh, and then, uh, colleagues that can speak to the professional, uh, experience. Now, that's different than that background, uh, check that we do at the end. Uh, any, any thoughts on the number of slated? Are you comfortable without setting a number, uh, with, with what generally we recommend? Six to 12? Six to 10?
Mr. Orr. I would recommend cast the net and see what we get, based on your criterion, you know, that you come up with. It's pretty hard to predict how many we'll get, as, as you said. Um, but I think that with the criterion that's established, hopefully, all the ones we get will be competitive.
Thank you, Mr. Orr. Yes, Mr. Dr. James.
Do you have any data on the average number of candidates who apply for some of the other Florida School Board, um, searches that have happened in recent history? I can, I know that what is forward-facing, so what makes it to the public, is not a whole lot of candidates. So, I'm just wondering if there's a lot, you know, under the hood there that we're not seeing, or if, if truly the number of candidates applying for jobs is not significant?
We, we've looked, I, I looked at, uh, Deval the last time they were out. Uh, they had something like 26, 29. There were six that they looked at. Uh, I saw some of the candidates, and actually knew who some of them were. In fact, one of them was a candidate from New Jersey. Uh, the, the, the field was, was relatively thin. Um, I can tell you, again, some of that is, is a sunshine requirement, and, and that's, that's what we operate under here in, in Florida. Uh, but, um, we generally, I, I would expect, uh, for, uh, it, again, depending on one of our items here, on the, the level of, of compensation that we can advertise, that will have something to do with it. About 55% of the applicants that apply for the jobs that HYA, uh, does, uh, are, are generally, come from the marketing and re, and, and that, that we do to promote the district and reach out. About 45% are direct contacts that our team makes, or other team members from HYA make. Interestingly enough, about 75% of the people that are hired come from that 45%. And they're the ones that may not be looking for a job, uh, may not know that there's a great opportunity in Marion County that we reach out to. They may be perfectly happy where they are. Uh, but this is an opportunity. And, and so, that's all important i- in terms of the, of the process. Um, the last time Broward was out, it wasn't, there, there weren't very many, 19, 20, whatever. We just did a New Jersey search in, um, um, East Brunswick, New Jersey. We had 62 applicants. Again, it, 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 it depends on the state. I think, um, one of the things that will impact us, again, will be what we, what, what we're allowed to go out in terms of marketing, uh, for, uh, compensation level. And we're going to give you some examples in, in a few minutes.
Okay, that was just kind of a little note I wanted, I had been wondering about, so, thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
I'm comfortable with the number of candidates presented.
I am, I am too, also.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, a, a fairly easy one, um, candidate expenses. Um, the, the standard in the industry is, is to pay for candidate expenses, uh, that you bring in, uh, subject to IRS and GAO requirements, obviously Board policy and state statute. Uh, and, and you don't have to give us direction today, but once we start talking to applicants, we, we like to know how you feel. There, there likely would be up to two, uh, events where you would bring people face-to-face. While we use a lot of virtual things, we don't recommend our interviews be done virtually. We recommend that, that people meet you face-to-face, as we are this morning.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Any thoughts on candidate expenses?
What did, um, what's the average you spend? So how many candidates are we bringing in?
Well, I, for the first round, likely between five and seven. For the second round, uh, and keep in mind, some, some may be in-state, some, uh, and typically, in-state, there's not always a, a mileage thing. But, uh, if people come from out-of-state, generally, there's an expectation. The second round, uh, you're, you're likely talking no more than three, and, and it could very well just be two.
And it, is there a cap on the expense? Or is it a grab-your-first-class ticket from Delta?
We, we, we generally put the condition, if HYA is, is putting it out, uh, coach, lowest direct flight fare, uh, if it's a flight. We always say, uh, IRS guidelines, especially when it comes to mileage or anything like that, and GAO, which sets the standard for hotel and, and so forth. But in answer directly to your question, you, the Board, can put a top stop. And you don't have to do that today, but you could think about that. You could say, "Top stop is $1,200." Top stop is...
$100 for a flight?
That would be flight, hotel.
Uh, yes, Attorney Power.
We have both Florida statute and Board policy, which speak to maximum allotted amounts for travel expenses for any purpose. So, we could reimburse at that level.
Do we know what that level is, or?
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to look it up and get, get it to you. But there's a, there's, and it depends on, that maximum level is depending upon mileage and other factors, so.
Okay, and I would just also encourage the Board, we have great community partnerships, so I would encourage the Board to have discords with some of the local hotels, some even right here, near downtown Ocala, to come up with a partnership for, you know, booking a block of rooms, potentially for a couple of days, and trying to lock in a rate that would be, um, more appropriate for the community. Because this is ultimately a community expense, we're a taxpayer-funded organization, and so trying to be good stewards to that money and understand how much it will cost, and trying to find avenues and ways we can make sure that it's the most cost-efficient.
Uh, Dr. James, uh, that's actually, um, this was many years ago, about, uh, I guess, 14 years ago now, when we did Broward County. Uh, that's exactly, uh, how they handled it. They, they booked a block of rooms, everything was, was done that way. Uh, and again, it'll depend, I think, on the number of applicants that would be coming in, uh, and so forth. That was truly an, a, a, a national search, where, uh, a, a majority of the candidates came from all over the country.
Thank you. Okay, yes, Mr. Orr.
You know, as we're parsing this out, um, just in terms of keeping it very clean, I would likely be more comfortable with just, you know, with following our Board policy, that's what it's there for, Florida statutes. These are intelligent people that can find their way to Ocala, and I think that they should have the opportunity, within the parameters we set, to decipher themselves, for whatever reasons, uh, you know, where they want to stay, and, and, and what have you, and, and, and that just keeps it clean. I would rather stay arms-length from those types of details, that's just me.
Okay. Oh, wait, hold on. Just kidding. Reverend Cummings.
Thank you. Obviously, you have plenty of time to, to work that out, however you want to do it. And, uh, as Council said, you have a policy that, that guides this.
Reverend Cummings?
Well, I, I, I heard, um, Attorney Power say that there is a policy. Um, when we do standard recruitment and bringing folks in, do we pay for their, we don't pay for their, um, travel in and all that stuff?
No. Miss Warren shaking her head. Like when we did a CFO search.
Correct. Thank you. Just want to make sure we, we know where we are.
I would tend to agree with Reverend Cummings. Uh, and, but I can also appreciate the, um, standard expectation for a search like this. But we just did a CFO hire, which I would say is the second-in-command in our district, and I don't believe we offered any travel expenses or compensation for expenses for that. So, that would just be something I would like to at least keep in the back of our mind as we continue the conversation.
All right, thank you for that input. Yes?
And, and that's not a bad point, um, at all. Um, we also have to keep in mind that this is our hire, and we definitely want to reflect industry standard, um, because when you deviate from something like that, uh, it, it could be good, it could be not so good. On how people respond to that. Again, uh, I'm a big fan of keeping it clean, keeping it straightforward. If we're going to do this, uh, that's what we're hiring you for. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So that, that conversation will continue, and it doesn't have to be, uh, decided now. And I think your, your thoughts are out on the, at least out on the table. Uh, the next item, uh, is simply to report to you the advertising. Uh, it says advertising options, uh, but I, I did want to point out that, uh, about five years ago, we made a business decision on our website, uh, and we allow competitors, uh, to put their searches on the website. As a result, uh, it has become a go-to place for, uh, uh, people in the education leadership field, executive leadership, uh, to look for, uh, positions. We get about 25,000 hits a month, and that's included, uh, in, in, uh, our, our advertising process. Uh, as part of our proposal that was accepted, uh, Advertising Package Three, uh, it, it will be utilized, and, uh, that ensures that you get into Education Week, uh, and, uh, some of the, the, the most important, to make sure there's national coverage. Uh, that'll give us not only in-state, but regional and national coverage. Um, along, uh, with that, uh, we also included in our package the NASB ALIS, um, information, and, uh, that'll put us online 30 days each with, uh, the National Alliance of Black School Educators, uh, and the, um, Association of Latino School Administrators. So, uh, we have coverage, we believe, in terms of the advertising, it was included in our proposal, uh, that should give us, uh, some, uh, a wide range, both to make sure we're in-state, make sure we're regional, and to make sure that, that we're national. And I just wanted to, to, to point that out, it is, it is part of our contract with you. Um, any questions on that?
No, I think we're good to go.
Okay. Uh, I mentioned at the outset, when we went over, uh, the original, um, um, uh, four stages. In the last stage, uh, we do that, uh, background check. We use a third-party private investigator, uh, that will provide us with a complete report. If you looked at the, uh, search brochure, there's like nine items covered, but I, I, I'll just repeat the ones, uh, the broad general categories, criminal, civil, financial. Um, and that includes a TransUnion or Equifax credit report, which has to be, uh, generally, that report would go to Council, and then Council would, uh, present it, because there's some things that you simply have to protect, especially the credit, uh, and financial check. Uh, the, uh, credential verification, both the credential the individual claims to have, as well as the agency or university that issued the credential. Uh, media review, which is generally a five-year media review, and a social media review, uh, which you'll, you'll have. So that's the background check on the final, conditionally-selected candidate, conditioned on that, and obviously, contract negotiations. Any questions on that?
Dr. Campbell and I are thinking the same exact thing, so I'll say it, because between the two of us, we're pretty good at saying the inside thoughts out loud. So in the light of the recent narratives in the national news circuit regarding superintendents, I would hope that whatever background check we are doing is going to ensure that the candidates that make it to the final stage of our interview process are legal citizens and are eligible for employment in the United States.
And they haven't falsified any information within their resume?
Or are felons.
That's setting the bar pretty low.
Well, I just...
I understand the conversation.
Well, and it's just concerning, because when the news became public, I was very concerned, because you wonder, how does someone get to such a CEO-tier position and is completely not qualified even for employment? So I just felt important to at least mention it, seeing as we are having that public discussion today. And Dr. Campbell gave me the eyes, so I knew she thought we were on the same thing.
We're on the same pathway.
I just pray that's a one-off. Dear God.
We do too, but...
But, oh, yes.
The plot just continued to thicken, and we do not want to be the next national news story.
Not for that reason.
Only for good things.
That's right. Want to be a national news story, but not for that.
Thank you for pointing that out. We do not want and will not allow Marion County to become Des Moines, Iowa. So thank you for that. And it is an important part of the process that ensures that. We look at that almost like a title policy on a House, and that's how important that background investigation is. Salary-infringed benefits. In order for us to be able to advertise nationally and to start the promotion... Now, formally, we're not going to be recruiting until you prepare the desire... Or approve the desired characteristics after the survey, after the community input. But we will post a position almost immediately. And we do need a salary or a compensation level would probably be a better way to do that. I prepared some information I'm going to give to you verbally, and unfortunately, because we couldn't get the information, I didn't have it until last night, and under the procedures, I can't project it, or... But I do have a copy. Once I present it to you, I can give you, and then we can make it publicly available as well. But one of the things that we look at are comps around the state, around the country. Because although this is a Florida search, we're going to be attracting applicants from all over, including our state and so forth. So I looked at the counties that touch in some way Marion County, and as we look at those counties, Alachula, Citrus, Lake, Marion, Putnam, Sumter, Levy, and Volusia, we have a lake in between, but Volusia, I have. Now, as I look at them, three of... Or four of those superintendents are elected, and that elected salaries are controlled differently in Florida. So I threw... I took them out. Now, in the information I'm going to provide you, I have all of the number of students, the schools, and the salary as listed by the salaries of elected county constitutional and school district officials for fiscal year 2025, '26.
Disperse that before he gets started?
Sure.
Attorney Powers, is that acceptable? For him to disperse the consumable to us before he gets started? Just so we can have it in front of us? You said you have something to give us?
I do, if we're permitted to give it to you at this time.
Okay. Sorry, Chair, thank you.
Yes.
I felt like we were about to get a lot of numbers, and I was ready to write, but...
Well, and I was busy, because Ms. Marant sent us something also, so I was looking to see if I could pull that up. Thank you, Dr. James.
Thank you.
Please note on there, at the very bottom, it says fiscal year 2025. It should be 2025-26. I believe this information became available on September 25 statewide. We just received it. All of you have a copy in front of you?
We do.
Well, as you look at the first page after the cover page, you can see the counties that touch, and the superintendent's salary figure that's given is the figure that was given by the state organization, and that's the Office of Economic and Demographic Information. That may not actually reflect the information that is available in the district, and it doesn't reflect, to our knowledge, any supplements. So as you look at those figures, if you take the four counties, including Marion, that do not elect their superintendent but appoint their superintendent, the average base salary is $216,396. And so we use that as kind of a base starting point. If you go to the next page, your last permanent superintendent, when she left the position in July of '25, the salary was $238,612. There were three additional supplements totaling $15,000 for a total of $254,112. That's the information based on the actual contract.
And that does not include the vehicle, correct?
I don't know what the three supplements include, but as far as I understand it, it does not include...
Does include the vehicle? Ms. Marant's?
She nodding, yes.
It did include. Because the vehicle was $6,000 annually, I think. And then I guess the other supplements would have been the doctorate supplement? I'm looking beyond you, I'm sorry. I'm kind of like looking at Ms. Marant, but... Because I realize you wouldn't have known that information. Okay. You sent it to our email? Oh, okay. I'm just wondering what they were. I just... I know for me, having that context as we go into this conversation and understanding what worked well for us and what didn't work well for us, I would like to have as frame and context for the conversation as all, so...
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the surrounding county superintendent salaries, were these... Are these base salaries, absent of any supplements? Do you know? Do we know?
As far as we know from reviewing the document, they're base salaries. What's difficult, and if you read the document carefully, it says at the end specifically, each district or each school, division or system, should review their own documents. This is simply the information gathered from the state document.
And if I remember correctly, the... There's... It's codified in Florida State Statute as far as elected superintendent salaries.
Right, and that's what these amounts are.
Right.
And that's why, when I did the average of the four appointed, I did not include the elected.
Apples to oranges.
All right. If you go to the next page, just for some comparative purposes and to put this into context, in that we're recruiting in a very challenging market, we're recruiting for the '26-'27 school year. So if you take the average base salary for Marion County and the three adjoining that most closely resemble and are appointed, you can see that the $216,000, if you increase it by 3% for '26-'27, it's a base of around $222,888. I then went and took the last salary of the previous permanent superintendent, $238,612, and that's... That gets... That's base, that's without the supplement. Added 3%, if I was going to do that for the current year, and came out to $245,0770. And then added 3% for the '26-'27 school year, and came out with $253,143. And that doesn't include the supplements. When we recruit and market a district, we recommend a salary in the range of a figure or compensation, if you're looking at total compensation, which would include supplements. And we always say, subject to actual qualifications, experience, and negotiations. Some recruitment firms will say a range from a certain figure to another figure, and we find that it's not as palatable, it's not as saleable, and our experience shows to go with a single figure, which you always have, as the board, the opportunity, based on actual experience and qualifications, to go lower or to go higher. If you go to the next page, I'll give you an example of that. If the base, or not the base, if compensation was to be in the range of $250,000, subject to actual qualifications, negotiations, and experience, and you had $250,000, and you went 1% less than that, it would be $247,500, based on the actual person. If you went 5% less, it would be $237,500. If you found that superstar, and you wanted to go a percent higher, it would be $252,500. So we find generally, when you put a salary in the range of, based on the actual qualifications, that you can go probably as low as 5% below, you might go as high as 3% above. So I did the same thing. If the compensation, total compensation was to be in the range of $255,000, that could go as low as $252,450, and if you were to go a percent higher, $257,550. We did that for $250,000, $255,000, $260,000, and $265,000 for illustration purposes. We then looked at your budget, $1.3 billion, and we looked at the various sources, also recognized that there were cuts in the amount of $64 million this year, and we're talking, you know, compensation, which is high compensation. So if you go to the next page, and you look at the range that I gave you examples for, between $250,000 and $265,000, the first figure is less than 1/200th of 1% of your budget. If you go to the last figure, it's just slightly above 1/200th of 1% of your budget. So we're recommending that consideration to be given to advertising, not in terms of salary, but in terms of compensation. Compensation in the range of subject to. And we'd like to be able to have a figure to use for recruitment in what has been a very, very tough recruitment market, and to get the best person possible or the best applicants possible.
Chair, would Mr. Rios be able to share with the budgeted amount for this year? Did we put it in the budget for this year at all for superintendent? Or...
Yes, he's welcome. I can't see over the screen. Is he here?
Yes, he's here, sorry.
Sorry, I can't see him from here. Yeah.
Yeah, we can pull that information. I don't have it available in front of me now, but yes, the budget for all positions, as approved by the board, is for full employment for the entire district, which would include the superintendent in all positions.
I guess specifically my question is, did we budget in the interim superintendent salary, which is significantly less than a superintendent position? And understanding, we're saying the search is for the '26-'27 school year, but we've also had many public conversations about this person coming online by March or April, and so that would have impact to at least three or four months of this fiscal year.
I get your question, and we'll have to pull the exact amount that we used for the current year. It may have been a appropriated amount based on the current interim superintendent that we have, so we'll need to pull that information.
Okay. Understanding, I think we have to make a decision today, but I guess we'll just figure it out. If we... We'll have to adjust the budget accordingly, assuming we hire someone above what we've budgeted for?
That is correct. If that's the board's desire, as the gentleman pointed out, it seems like you have some flexibility to go above or below, and so we would accommodate that request.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Reverend Cummings?
And I'll also, while we're looking at these numbers, take into consideration in prior search, in the prior search, prior process, we also have to consider there were some additional expenses with the calling of an appointed superintendent that, when we went through the process, that we didn't necessarily think about. That was like moving expenses and travel to move back and forth and all that stuff. So there's some additional expenses that's going to arise out of this, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it'll be negotiated in the contract. Correct? Yes.
Correct.
Chair, if you don't mind, I think... I guess my question today would be, are you just looking for a salary range or the fringe benefits, which is also included on Number 11? Are you looking for us to identify? Because personally, for this board member, there were benefits that were provided to the last superintendent that I would like the board to discuss, whether those would be applicable again.
Generally, we recommend... If we were in an ideal world, and budget and budget cuts and the impact on taxes and so forth weren't considered, we'd prefer to say a salary in the range of $255,000. However, we're recommending hedging that by saying compensation in the range of subject to. That gives you total compensation and allows you a lot of flexibility with the minuses and pluses, and it gives us a tremendous amount of flexibility in recruiting candidates.
Okay, so I think I understand what you're saying. I'm sorry, and I've missed it the prior four times you said it, but I get it now. So compensation being defined as the entire compensation package versus salary being the individual salary plus a fringe benefits package?
Correct.
Okay, so advertising as a compensation level of $255,000 all-in, meaning that we would subtract presumably 15 or 20K from that if needed to be able to absorb the costs of other benefits that may come on?
Correct.
Okay.
And when you negotiate supplements, whatever those supplements are, no matter what the figure is, this is a big, big number. And people look at it, it may be one of the highest numbers in the county. And they look at that, and whether you were to be at 200 or 270, there'd be criticism, no question about that as well. But it's also a person responsible for a very large school system, a $1.3 billion budget. And we believe that if you go in that area of $255,000 compensation, you can negotiate... If the person is more interested in salary that's pensionable, maybe then there's less in supplements. We see situations where people will say, "Well, keep the dollar number down, and we'll do a 401-3B in the amount of $25,000." We recommend going with a total figure and then negotiate it, however you're negotiating it.
Understood. I can get on board with the $255,000 number as a compensation number, so that's my position on it.
Okay, Mr. Ohr.
And I'm good with that.
And I'm, I'm good with that too, you know, it's, I just get back to the apples and oranges comparison, you know, this is all public record, and okay, so you look at Citrus County, or, well, let's look at Levy County, for example. Oh, a hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy dollars, well, they have five-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-nine students. And we have getting, you know, we're pushing fifty thousand. So those are just the kinds of things as board members that will have to answer and, and be clear about the facts.
And the two-seventeen number is the elect, if it was elected, that is the elected rate, it would be?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Because I think the narrative will be important as we, as the community continues a conversation about putting about referendum to go back to elected, understanding that the base is gonna be no less than two-seventeen, because our population is not going down in Marion County. And then if you add on those fringe benefits, you're, you're gonna be within fifteen to twenty K of the appointed rate anyways.
Kind of a push.
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Campbell?
I'm processing all the information, I, I did pull comps, our city manager makes two-fifty-eight, I think. County administrator may be a little bit less than that, based on what I was trying to, to pull. Looks like also Volusia, who now has the National Superintendent of the Year by one association, I think she's about two-eighty is what she makes, I think. So I was just trying to, I'm, I'm trying to pull in a bunch of other figures beyond what you had done, thank you so much. I, I also have the chart that, that you have of what the elected comparisons would be. I also understand that part of our explanation on our one-point-three-billion-dollar budget is that it's inflated, because we are carrying our self-insurance fund. We're carrying three-hundred-million dollars in building, like, so one-point-three-billion is the number, but it's not really the number, so that's part of our explanation. So I, I appreciate that it's a part of the calculation here, but in actuality, it's, it's a little bit different than that. I, I understand that two-fifty-five as a general number could be something that we could go out and market. I definitely wanna have the flexibility to, to round that down, depending on qualifications and depending on a lot of other factors. We're not gonna pay a huge moving expense if the person lives in Lake County, for example. So I mean, there's gonna be some opportunity for us. There, we also know in our last superintendent salary negotiation for her three-year salary, three-year contract again, that happened a couple of years ago, she had asked for this higher level in the FRS than what we had been giving her. So there's, that, and that may be a part of that fifteen-thousand dollars that was included there. So just with, with the ability to, to go down from two-fifty-five as much as we could also go up, that's where I am. I, I don't like the idea of even considering two-sixty-five, honestly, at this point. But I would say two-sixty-five as a part of a contract negotiation to say, if we achieve A-rated status, or if we pull this, if we have zero D-school, like, all these kinds of things, we move all these Cs to Bs and like, knowing that DOE is gonna be, or the legislature and DOE are gonna be changing the metrics on those formulas anyway, but that's, I mean, you, you don't get to be the National Superintendent of the Year in Volusia. The way, I mean, she, absolutely no D-schools, like, they, they have increased the number of A-schools exponentially. They're an A-rated district, like, lots of things that have changed in Volusia County, uh, under her leadership. And so that's the kind of work that I would look forward to putting into contract negotiations for a future superintendent.
Ma'am Chair, so you're basically saying that we're gonna do some incentives?
Yes.
Performance incentives.
Which we do for all of our other, all teachers and, and administrators, so.
That's what I would be looking for.
So that, again, that, that number could really go higher than what we're, this range that we're talking about?
Mr. Rios?
Oh, yes, metrics are incredibly important. And point taken from the rest of the board members, you know, we're an up-and-coming district in, in many ways. You know, look at our kindergarten readiness, we were at the bottom, and now we're squarely in the middle in a very short amount of time. So we always want great performance to be rewarded, any way we can, we can do that. And moving forward, I can see that completely being the consensus of the board to incorporate that into contract.
Okay. And for me personally, I, I'd like to see us closer to a number of two-forty, but it sounds like the rest of the board is in agreeance at two-fifty? At least, I-
I mean, I, I said two-fifty-five just 'cause it sounded like that was the direction we were going, frankly. I'm, I'm more comfortable going down, frankly.
I'm more comfortable around two-forty. When I look, when I look at the numbers in front of me and compare them to the numbers that we, that we have, I'm much more comfortable starting at two-forty. Yes.
Let me just say, we need to be careful of parsing, because in the, you know, we're talking fifteen-thousand dollars here. And we have a professional standing in front of us that's been doing this for a long time, that has made a recommendation. So this is an amazing board, I mean, we go deep and we talk everything through. But at the same time, I also think it's important to go with a recommendation, especially knowing that it's, it's being framed as, as a compensation package, and we can go, you know, higher or lower, depending on who we get. But I'm concerned about making sure, again, that if we're gonna move forward with this, we want some good fish.
And, and I agree with you, Board Member Thrower, I'm just, you know, we are, we are accountable. As a board member, I am accountable to the people of Marion County. And so I'm sharing with you what is on my heart, and on my heart, I'm landing at two-forty. But that being said, I will go along with what is the board's preference. So everyone else is sitting at two-
Can we just, Ma'am Chair, just split the difference, two-forty-five?
Reverend Cummings, you are great at working out compromise. Board, I'm gonna have everybody chime in one more time, one more time. Dr. James, where are you comfortable?
Um, I was comfortable at that-
Two-fifty?
But I can go with whatever the pleasure of the majority of the board is. I'm not, I don't, I'm not gonna die on any hill with related to this.
Okay, Reverend Cummings?
Two-forty-five.
Board Member Campbell?
I'm fine with two-forty-five or two-fifty, either spot, I, I'm fine with that. I, and I know it's five-thousand dollars, it's just, as soon as we roll this out, guys, we're gonna get critiqued to death by our community. They do need to understand that if this person was elected, they would be making two-seventeen. That's a big difference than what we're talking right now. 'Cause five-thousand dollars is one thing, thirty to forty-thousand dollars is another. And so two-forty-five sounds fine to me.
Board Member Thrower?
I'd be more comfortable with two-fifty, to be honest. You know, again, I just, I'd rather be able to share with the community that we are looking to bring in as many qualified candidates as we can. If at the end of the day, we're able to get them for five-thousand or ten-thousand less, you know, great. I, I'm paying for this, you're paying for this, we're all paying for it, 'cause, 'cause we're all taxpayers. But I just get a little uncomfortable when we have a, a solid firm making a recommendation for a reason, due to years and years of experience, and they're gonna be the ones that are gonna have to bring them to us. So that's where I am, two-fifty, that just sounds like a more real number.
Okay. But what I'm hearing from the board is two-forty-five is what the majority is speaking for.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the calendar and the preparation that takes place at that first meeting in terms of workshop. I'm gonna ask Stacy to go over the calendar with you and make sure that we understand it correctly, and then maybe even try to get some commitment to some dates specifically down the line.
Okay, so here we are today on October the second at the planning meeting, which is the first line item on the calendar. We will begin the initial posting, as Bill mentioned, first thing next week. It'll be up on the HYA website with the compensation indicated. Then what we will do between that posting next week and what we're suggesting for the interviews and the online survey and the focus groups, really is what we're talking about here, November the third, to commence both the online survey and the focus groups, is we'll be doing a lot of planning and a lot of promotion. So again, working very tightly with your public relations person and Elena to organize those sessions and then promote those. We think we have ample time there, and then to begin them somewhere that week on November the third, and also launch the survey at the same time. In between, we can do a calendar for your interviews, and again, I'll send that tomorrow to you, and you can sign up accordingly. With an end date of November the fourteenth, we're looking to present the Leadership Profile Report, the survey report and the Desire Characteristics to you, the week of November the fourth, November the twenty-fourth, which also happens to be, I believe, the week of Thanksgiving.
Yes, ma'am.
But I do believe that there's a board meeting on the twenty-fifth, if I'm correct.
I am not showing a board meeting on the twenty-
Okay, my bad.
Okay.
We'll just close that entire week, all district offices are closed. I mean, not that we can't be working on our laptops, but district offices are closed that week.
Okay, so is there a date that you would, or a time, given that we need time to pull the information together, that you would suggest for?
Well, we have a work session on the twentieth, but you wouldn't have the data together to upload?
On Thursday the twentieth?
Or December ninth, our next board meeting after that would be December ninth.
But are you presenting it, I'm, I just wanna understand, is the information presented in a, I know that every board does their work differently, but we have work sessions to receive information and board meetings to vote on information. So if this is an opportunity for the board to receive information, it would be most appropriate in a work session, not in a board meeting? I mean, Chair or Board, tell me if I'm wrong, but that would be my understanding. I know every board operates differently, but that is the way we work.
This could, this could certainly be done in a work session, it takes about an hour. You'll have the information in advance of the session. The only thing we would be asking direction on from the board would be the desired characteristics.
Okay, then we might wanna schedule a work session, because I have December eighteenth would be the next work session.
But I believe FSBA conference is the first week in December, the whole-
Okay.
Ma'am Chair, couldn't we, for this, because this is vitally important for our community and for the district, if we needed to have a special work session just for this item, that we do that?
I agree, I agree.
That's what she was saying, but it's not gonna be available until like the second week in December. Because FSBA is the first week in December, we're not meeting the week of Thanksgiving. The twentieth, you all would not have the data to us for proper publication, because the publication would have to happen on the thirteenth of November. So unless the timeline speeds up, so that you get that information collected, the earliest that you all would be able is the week of December eighth to present to the board, I think is what I would surmise.
Okay.
So what, what days is FRS, the, excuse me, FSBA?
I think-
Fixed, no, third, fourth, fifth?
No.
That week?
I think Reverend Cummings goes on Tuesday.
Okay, so all of that week, then Sunday, so the next week, starting December ninth?
The eighth.
The eighth.
Board meeting on the ninth, sorry. That Thursday would be the eleventh, would you all be available for a work session on that day?
Yes.
December eleventh.
There's another community board meeting that day that I've been trying to prioritize attending.
It's, it's possible that the morning of the first, which is Monday the first, and I understand that will be the day we're all coming back from break, but the morning of the first, we possibly could do, which is a Monday. I know I don't check into the hotel until the afternoon that day.
Now, I would agree with Dr. Campbell, I think if we, if the first is available, certainly that would be-
Ideal for me.
And then we can get it taken care of instead of delaying it a whole nother week?
Right.
Yes.
Is that, is that something that would work for you all?
Yes, absolutely.
Right, Ms. Martinez Young?
So like nine AM or whatever?
Calendar invites for the first, please.
And we will just deal with justice issue?
Justice.
Justice, yes.
And for this particular meeting, we will probably be zooming in.
Okay.
Alrighty, then, as Bill-
December first, nine to eleven.
If we have an agenda review, we'll have to-
We'll have to reschedule, the agenda review. The agenda review is scheduled that morning, but we can reschedule it.
This should only take an hour, you said?
Right.
Hour and a half.
Yeah, so, I mean, we'll slate it for two hours and-
You'll have the, yeah, you'll have the information beforehand, correct, so?
Yes.
Yes. 'Cause it will have to publish.
Well, Ms. Martinez will need to publish on like the twenty-first, seeing as we're out of office the week of Thanksgiving. So we'll just need to make sure that the information is provided before we go on break, so that while on Thanksgiving break, Ms. Martinez is not having to publish meetings.
Okay, so December, Monday, December the first at nine AM?
Correct, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, as Bill mentioned, we'll post the opportunity on our website immediately. Advertising, however, will be built around December and January, with an application deadline suggested of January the thirtieth. This is, I think, ample time. We'll have, again, we owe, the opportunity will be live out there on our website. We'll start to use the Desire Characteristics that are agreed upon from December the first all through the month of December and all through the month of January to recruit for the position. Then with that in mind, what we're suggesting is to present a slate of candidates to you on the week of February the sixteenth. That'll give us enough time to vet those, those applications and put together that slate for you. And then after the slate is presented, on February, the week of February the sixteenth, we're looking at the first interview on March the second. That kinda gives you this longer range.
Right, and I'm just, I'm following my calendar as you go through, so I'm wondering if we wanna go ahead and, and plug these dates in, the ones that we're able to. And so December eighteenth would-
December eighteenth?
February the eighteenth?
You mean February eighteenth.
Oh, sorry, shoot.
February eighteenth is-
Well, that's a Wednesday. Well, she, it's the week of February sixteenth, is what's stated on the document.
I just, if we can, real quick, pause, I know that this has come up before with Dr. Campbell, and I agree with her wholeheartedly on this item, is to revisit the job description. That is not something that we've done yet, but we have had conversation about the JD attached to this particular position. And there, there, I think, certainly at least, I know Dr. Campbell and I have shared, I think, believe multiple things that we feel like need to be moved or changed. Where in this timeline does that need to occur? Or should it have already occurred?
We work off of the Desire Characteristics and the Leadership Profile Report. So if there's something internally in addition that you use-
That's what I thought. So is that gonna be, so if we're looking at your timeline, what was the week of November twenty-fourth, when you present those desired characteristics? We need to get to you prior to that meeting, an updated JD, or no?
Not necessarily, yeah.
Okay. When you do the initial posting next week, does that not include the job description?
It does not.
Okay, so when does the job description get posted? Or is that, when is that included in the communication?
Again, typically what we do is we work off of the Desire Characteristics and the Leadership Profile Report. So the job descrip, description is something if you're adding into the process, you would need to-
Okay. I understand, I think maybe then following the, the work session where we have the discourse on December first about the desired characteristics, Board, maybe we could take that information and Ms. Morant could work on updating our job description then, would that be a more appropriate flow of work?
I believe that's-
Okay, I just wanna make sure that from our side of the table, we get that taken care of, 'cause it's something that I wanna make sure we align to get, before we get to the finish line.
I agree.
Yeah, it, it makes total sense to have the desired characteristics and leadership profile incorporated into an updated job description.
Okay, so then following, Dr. Brewer, maybe at some point in a work session, we can get the, or Ms. Morant, or whoever be- get the, or Ms. Morant or whoever would be most appropriate, figure out how to get the job description brought to a work session? Do you think, Chair, we should have it in in a work session? Maybe following this December 1st work session, we could then have an updated JD brought to the Board so then we can review it as it's combined and have discourse on it?
Ms. Morant's got a thumbs up, Anna.
Awesome. Sorry to interject in your timeline, but I just, it made my brain jump to there.
I completely agree, Dr. James, that that job description needs to be-
Needs to be done.
Done as soon as possible so that before we bring the slate of candidates before they would have that.
Yes.
In hand.
Certainly, I don't think it would be appropriate to like at the end of the, you know, at the negotiation table and then we're like, oh, by the way, here's the job description. So I want to make sure that we button that up, so, okay, thank you for that sidebar.
Sure. So with regard to the slate presentation, the week of February the 16th, is there any preferable date or?
We have a work session already scheduled on the 18th, or excuse me, 19th.
No, we don't.
Okay.
We don't.
I think-
Well, probably rejecting-
Our calendar hasn't gone out yet.
Calendar hasn't come out yet.
But that, if we follow our traditional 1st and 3rd Thursday, we will most likely have a work session scheduled on the 19th.
Yes.
This is a three-hour meeting.
Okay.
So we don't need that on a date with-
A regular-
At least a special work session.
Okay. How about the 12th? Oh, no, she said the 16th.
Monday is a holiday. We don't have a, well-
What about the date?
Seventeenth, Tuesday.
I mean, the 18th is, I would say that our options are about the 17th or the 18th.
Let's say 17th.
17th.
17th, I believe, is better too.
Yeah, I'm fine with the 17th.
Okay. Dr. Campbell, I didn't see if that was a-
17th.
Yes.
17th. 9:00 AM, is that when you-
Yes.
Then 9 to 12.
Ms. Martinez Young, did you get all that? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, which will bring us to the initial interviews. You'll select who you want to bring in from the slate and we're suggesting the week of March the 2nd. Now, what we typically recommend so that there's a level playing field, that it's all done in one day, given that there's some flexibility for weekdays with, with all of you, sometimes we even go to a Saturday, but that's up to you. But we do recommend all interviews occur on the same day.
Madam Chair, so at this time, when you bring the slate, you bring in a slate of about 10?
That's the slate on, on February the 17th. Now, we're talking about from the slate, you're going to identify your first round of interviewees. And so when you bring your candidates into interview, we suggest interviewing all the candidates on the same day.
10.
No, no, like the ones we- From the slate workshop, we're going to pick five or six-ish and do the first round.
So we're going to open it down, okay?
Generally, you'd be, ideally, six. Five to seven.
Okay.
So we're talking about probably 8:30 in the morning to 4 o'clock in the afternoon. Solid day. Breaks in between, scheduled usually for a break between each interview, a break after the 4 and then 2 and then deliberations.
So there would have already been an elimination round, basically.
The slate eliminates about 50% of the slate.
Yes.
To the first round of interviews.
Chair?
Chair.
Yes.
Chair.
Oh, I apologize.
No, it's okay. And are these interviews, are they public interviews or this is like a round robin? We sit in a room and we have six different people come in to us and they are all rotating?
I think that would be up to council. Generally, in Florida, they're public.
Yes, they would have to be.
Okay, so just like this, this would be, and all five of us would be interviewing each candidate at one time? Okay. Are they closed to the public or open to the public? Obviously, it's a, obviously, it's a public meeting being televised, but is there people in the audience?
It would be open to the public.
Okay.
Public comment would be accepted. However, as to whether or not it's televised, that's, that's not a requirement or Florida laws.
Okay, understood.
And, Madam Chair, if I'm not mistaken, I'm, I know I'm not mistaken, the last ones we did were public and they were all virtual.
Yes.
Because it was during COVID.
It was right prior to COVID.
Well, it was during COVID, it was in-
No, all of them, I take that back. Several of them were virtual. They were things-
Right, we had some in person.
There were some in person.
Yeah.
But they were all public, all public.
Yes.
And, and-
COVID didn't start until March of 20.
Yeah.
Right.
So they were all public, they, some were virtual via Zoom. I remember that.
Mm-hmm.
And there was no public comment concerning. We all had the same questions, whatever questions we asked.
Yes, we had interviewed.
Every candidate had the same questions.
We had a pre, we predetermined questions we would ask.
Correct.
So everyone got asked the same questions.
Individually, that was a decision we made independently or it was a collective decision we made as questions to ask?
We had a slate of questions that we said, you do 1 through 3, I'll do whatever.
Okay, is that a-
At the workshop, when we present the slate, we'll work with you to develop questions. We'll actually prepare a script for you to follow. We recommend that that first round, you ask the same questions to each candidate and then the second round, you would, you would have an opportunity perhaps for the candidate to make a presentation to you. You determine the topic and then you would ask questions regarding the presentation. Then you might ask follow-up questions from the first round. You might then also identify specific questions to a specific candidate when you get to that second round and then perhaps allow maybe up to 20 minutes to a half hour for the candidate to ask you questions, which is that when that gets down to that, that second round and that can almost be like the first day on the job depending on who you sought.
Okay. So we're, do we need to pick a date?
Back to the date.
Of March?
Yes.
You need a March date?
Yes, we're looking at the week of March.
3rd.
First or second, yes. So it's-
Getting close to spring break, yeah.
Well, we have the first two weeks of March open and then the third week of March will be our spring break, so we would be unavailable.
Tuesday, March 3rd.
Depending on where we're pulling.
So the first round of interviews, we're suggesting the week of March the 2nd and then the follow-up with the second round of interviews, the following week, March, March the 9th. So we, we don't want too much time in between.
Right.
I would say the 9th as well.
3rd and the 9th of March?
March 3rd is okay with me. March 9th works for me too. Rest of the Board?
Right. Yes, I think it's just important for the Board to remember, we'll probably have a board meeting on the 10th. Yes.
Correct.
So we all know how busy days before board meetings can be.
Yes.
So I just, to spend all day in an interview the day before, and our staff in an interview the day before a board meeting, just, I guess I'm saying it for awareness because I, understanding if our staff is tied up in this, then-
Would you prefer to move it to the following, the following week's spring break? So we don't, we don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of wiggle room at that time of the year.
Well, I'm just saying maybe af, a Wednesday after the board meeting would be a little bit easier to navigate, but I just know for me, the date, like the Monday and then the Tuesday leading into a board meeting seem to always be-
So the 11th is what you're asking?
I think the 11th would be more feasible for everyone.
How is the 11th for the rest of the Board? That's okay? Reverend Cummings? All right, the 11th, 11th, Ms. Martinez Young.
Is the timeframe 9 to 12?
Well, no, it'd be like, I think they said 9 to 4, 9 to 5.
Whatever you determine, 8:30 to 4:30, 9 to 5?
All day.
All day.
All day.
9 to 5.
9 to 5.
So that's the 3rd and the 11th?
Yes. Okay, so with that in mind, just to follow along, is that after the last interview, obviously, then you'll be going and you'll make your selection, then negotiations will commence. We're looking to target for public announcement, week of March 23rd.
I just have a question from the way it works. If we publicly are having discourse following the semifinalist interviews and that public discourse lands at a chosen candidate, is that how that works?
At, at the end of that second round of interviews, the expectation would be you'd make a conditional selection.
Okay.
Conditioned on the background investigation, conditioned on negotiations. And then you would take action after negotiations to approve a contract at a public meeting.
I'm just, I guess, how do you nav, and this is maybe a silly question, but how do you then navigate? Because a public announcement, while I can appreciate, we would internally publicly announce it once it's Board approved, what would stop the public from announcing that the Board has made a conditional decision? And I guess I don't really recall what, what happened last time, so excuse my naivety, but if we publicly discuss the conditional hire, what then stops the newspaper from reporting that we've chosen a conditional? I mean, nothing obviously stops the newspaper, so-
Right. It's all very public.
So it becomes very instantly public, even though it's a conditional hire?
That, that is why initially, when we were talking compensation and so forth, Florida is a challenge simply because of our statutes that we have to follow.
Yeah. If that was the only reason why, right? Okay, thank you. I just kind of was wondering, I mean, we will obviously have a press release once it's Board approved, but everyone will kind of know once we decide on a conditional hire.
Ideally, in the recruitment world, not necessarily Florida, we would prefer to see everything confidential until you're ready to make an announcement. That protects the applicant, if the applicant's in a job where it could affect their job even though they have a great relationship, but that's, in Florida, this is how we have to operate.
Yes, I understand. Thank you just for obliging my questions.
And then obviously, the last date that's on there, we're looking at a July 1 start, but obviously, it's been mentioned, I think here, maybe even an earlier start date, but that's something that you can-
Well, and Chair, if I can, the RFP had a timeline that was not this timeline. So the RFP's timeline, and I'm going based off memory because I don't have it in front of me, but I see Dr. Campbell's head shaking, the RFP that I chose, I thought ended in January. Like, we had a candidate in January and they were taking, they were being in office by like April and that was because the Board, the Board articulated a desire to have someone in prior to a budget cycle or at least midstream into budget cycle. And so this timeline is not reflective of the RFP that we selected.
I don't have the RFP in front of me, but I can tell you that getting somebody on Board for January right now is mission impossible.
Well, I, I mean, we can pull up the RFP, but I can, I know for certain that's what the RFP said.
So the reason that we had that timeline in mind and why we had recommended that timeline was based off of recommendations from the Florida School Boards Association and the team of superintendents that they've worked with through the years, saying that the most appropriate timeline for a new superintendent coming into a school year of, say, '26, '27 would be a few months prior to the end of that prior year, fiscal year, so they could be a part of the budgeting conversations and the school staffing plan conversations and all of the things that happen in the spring months ahead of July 1. And so that's why we originally had that timeline. So while I, and I thank you for bringing that up, Dr. James, because that's what I honestly have been sitting here thinking, with the March of us having a prospective candidate chosen by then and us potentially not having that person seated until July 1, depending on from where they come, I don't see how they're going to participate in all the things. That's what, I honestly was just sitting here looking up, okay, what did we do in April's work sessions? What did we do in March's work sessions? Because we'll have the calendars that are going to be coming before us because Calendar Committee will be with the next couple of calendars. We'll have all, if we have to change bell time, so we have to, sure, well, yes, thank you.
Now on that.
Thank you, Board Member 3.
That instructional-
But good, but I just- The district staffing plan, the district staffing model, like all of those decisions we wanted the person to be on Board for, to be able to have determination in, in what that looks like. And so I don't, I don't know if there's room for condensing. I, I didn't want to like say this at the beginning because I, I didn't want to, I don't know, I just, I think this is not necessarily reflective of what was in the RFP and we wanted a faster timeline than this. I think the contract negotiations to get the firm hired and all, that took longer and that might have been on us as a Board to not get it on a board meeting. I, I don't, I don't know. I, I think that that part of it is what shifted this, but Dr. James, I, I concur with what your thoughts are.
Is there any, is there any area you feel comfortable in tightening the timeline?
I'm, I was looking up the RFP. As I understand it, the calendar we developed was developed off of the RFP, which has, actually has in, in employment piece through December 2026. But we can always tighten a timeline, but we get quite, asked a question all the time, what's the best time to look for or hire a superintendent? Well, the answer is real simple. When you need a superintendent, that's when you go. But if the superintendent could be on Board for this, the development of the successor budget, that's always helpful. But keep in mind that likely, your successor budget for '26, '27 will already be, in terms of staff development, well-developed by January, before January. You as a Board will start to look at that in February and so forth and then the public involvement, whatever public involvement you have. One of the things that can always be done is start recruitment concurrent before we get stakeholder input. The disadvantage of that is not having the desired characteristics or stakeholder input. So it's, it can be adjusted, but the calendar, as I understand it, was developed on the RFP. Do you find anything, Stace?
I have it here. Okay.
Yeah.
Got to use the mic.
Sure, we can go, we can go down that route, but within the approval at September 9th, I believe, then we worked in accordingly and tried to get in front of you as soon as possible. So now we are where we are with regard to the time and to make this happen for you. So based on what was just asked, where can we consolidate? As Bill mentioned, we can do some things simultaneously. If we were to push up and work even faster to get the intake done, that's one place we can kind of squeeze things, but I do know how important it is that your constituency groups are heard and to get enough time out there so that it's done in a way that people can make appointments on their, on their own calendars to be a part of that engagement phase. I'd be a little leery of that. And then again, the only thing that we could, let me look.
I, I guess my question would be, why does it take a month to start the interviews and focus group meetings?
Again, as I said, we can push that up a little bit, we can consolidate that. However, in order to identify all of the invitees, to get all of that information out, working in conjunction with your district team here and then to adequately promote it, that's where we need some time. So you need at least a week. If anything, you'll save a week here, but that's inconsequential to the quality of the engagement phase that it seems to me that you want to do, that you want to ensure. So there's a little bit of late work behind that, that the staff participates in, in order to make that happen, to do a thorough job. So again, if we, if you want to buy a week there, we can buy a week there.
Two weeks, yeah. And we heard from two Board members, but we didn't hear from the others on, on the timeline, so let me give the-
So let me give the rest of the board an opportunity to chime in and see where they fall. Ms. Thrower.
I have a question on the contract and our partnership with you. Attorney Powers, the way the contract is currently, are we paying in stages, you know, for phases of this journey? And I'll just explain why I'm asking this question. You know, having been with the district for a really long time and having a pretty good take and pulse on things just through experience, I also understand that there are what I would term journeyman kind of niche interim superintendents. You know, they have no interest truly in being a long-term superintendent. Their job is to go in and hold steady and then, you know, move along to, to that next opportunity. And then we have other interim superintendents, and I think the one sitting to my left is a great example of that, very interested in being a candidate, very interested in improving our school system, from what I've observed and witnessed so far. You know, our current interim superintendent is in it to win it for this district. And as I've been reflecting on this, and then looking at the timeline, it's like, what metrics are we using to evaluate our current interim superintendent? I mean, we're saying that the, whatever superintendent we get is going to assume responsibilities July 1. Well, we all know that most of the times, school grades don't even come out till after that time. And as we continue this conversation, I just see it as being more and more complicated and less and less real world for what we are currently experiencing as, as a district. Right now, what I am sensing across the schools that I'm, that are in my district is people have their eye on the ball, the work is happening, our attendance is improving. And what I don't want to see happen, because I've seen it happen too many times, is that something else outside of the core work begins to grab people's attention. The ones that are supposed to be focused on raising student performance and improving our district. And when that happens, we shoot ourselves in our own foot, because people become distracted. So that's why I asked about this contract, and are we paying it in phases? Because I think it is super important in, in terms of our community, to do the focus groups, do the online surveys, get, see if the temperature that we get reflects what I'm thinking it might, and then look at the results of that to determine our next steps. Will it be to resume a search on a much less compressed timeline, based on what we feel was, is really important, being there for the budget, you know, for the full banana? You know, if I was going to be taking on a job as a superintendent, I would want to come in early and stay late. But at the same time, I want to do justice and honor our community's input, because we don't have an elected superintendent right now. So I think that it would be detrimental to not do the interviews, the focus group meetings, and the online survey. And then, let's see how this year ends. Where are we with school grade? You know, where are we with everything? And then determine our next steps. And would that be to offer a contract to the interim superintendent sitting to my left, Dr. Brewer, or to go ahead and reopen the process on a timeline that makes sense for what we have determined are our priorities? That's kind of where I'm going with this.
Chair.
So to answer your question, there are three phases that it's broken down into, each of which call for payment after that section of phases. There's a planning stakeholder input phase, there is a recruitment and candidate selection phase, and then there's also a candidate interview, selection, interview, and closeout phase. So those are the phases identified in 3A of the contract. So it's sort of stages along the way.
Yes.
I just want to say, and I appreciate that, that was one of the things that I advocated for when we went through this process, was I would like to see phases, because I, I did feel very impassioned that we would get through Phase 1, and I would, I wanted the board to be able to pause, reflect, and make a decision from there. And so I'm very grateful to hear Board Member Thrower's thoughts on this, because I'm in complete alignment with that. And I'm, to me, it's, it's either one of two. We're either going to speed this up and do it right, and get someone in here by March or April, so that that person can have full authority to make decisions, or we're going to do Phase 1, and then we're going to reflect as a board and maybe take it longer and go from there. And so I, I can be on board with either of those, but to me, this particular timeline is not exactly reflective of where I want it to be if we're bringing someone new into the district. So I appreciate Board Member Thrower sharing those thoughts, because they are reflective of what I had thought when we had this initial conversation.
Reverend Cummings.
Madam Chair, when I see this timeline, I hear this conversation, we are making a major investment in getting a superintendent. We just talked about potentially a compensation package of $245,000, $250,000, which is a huge investment for that position. Not to mention what we have to pay this company for doing the search. I just don't feel that this process should be rushed. I think our community deserves for us to do it correctly, the right way, one time. Again, it's a major financial investment. And if we rush this process, I think we'll make some hasty decisions. And we all know haste makes waste, and we want to make sure that we're getting the best candidate forward for this, this, this position. I, I like the phase process that we talked about. I think we have people in place right now that are doing an actual, actually good job with the district, and making sure the district continues to move forward, because no matter what, the district can't stop moving, no matter how long the process takes.
And it doesn't.
And it doesn't.
And it doesn't. The people are on the ground or doing the work.
Exactly. So it's just to my opinion that we need to not rush this, definitely not rush this, and take our time and make sure that we get the best candidate, and we get the best superintendent that we can get.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. And I've, again, been going back in time and looking at our actual process. So you are correct on the RFP timeline, as it was presented, that what we had was that we were going to have a search firm secured by September 9. And so the timeline is, you guys are fulfilling the obligation of what that is. But what our recollection, Dr. James, I'm going to go back in time again, my recollection of the original conversation. We had the first conversation on March 24 about this, when FSBA gave their presentation and gave us, this is how a superintendent search can be conducted. At that time is when we got that information. We, as a board, chose to switch gears and not hire a search firm right away, and instead chose to go the interim superintendent, application process, interview, and we switched gears. And so by April 17, we had an interim superintendent in place, because that was, the priority of the board at the time was not to hire a search firm. And so we took a much longer timeline. I have all the emails from Mr. Collins, his recommendations, all the things. And when we put out the RFP, it specifically says we would have a firm in place by September 9, which is what our contract did. And so all of our original timeline, though, got changed because of the interim superintendent process.
I'll just reference their RFP, which, which Attorney Powers emailed us on page 85 of the PDF, is the, is the RFP timeline, which has a superintendent in place April 15, based on the timeline that was in the RFP that Conrad, Thrower, and I reviewed. Okay? And I wasn't a part of that process, so. But it's in your email, it's page 85. So I, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't going crazy, but it does, it does have a all-day interviews, January 10, appointment of a superintendent the week of January 19, and a start date of April 15, which was more in line with the thought pattern, which, again, for me, as someone who is making a decision, this was, based on prior board conversation as a whole board, this was the focus of the board at that time, was we want to just get this done, we want to move quickly, we want to make a decision prior to getting into major decisions, you know, in the spring. So I'm, can be completely on board with after Phase 1 of this, and the community input, the board takes a, takes a pause, we reevaluate and go from there. I'm completely on board with that. But I think then future casting meetings that we may very well then want to delay or whatever, needs to be discussed and considered as well.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Thrower.
And again, I think it's only fair that whatever superintendent or interim superintendent we have with us currently needs to have a chance to run the course, you know, and to see what the outcomes are. And, you know, live and learn, right? It's evidently not really going to be possible without being very, very hasty, which I'm hearing from the rest of the board, is that we're not comfortable with, to be able to meet that original RFP deadline. So it is what it is. Something that's encouraging is that we may very well get much more participation and authentic feedback by doing the focus groups, doing the surveys, you know, how's everybody think it's going? You know? And then take it from there.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Okay, Dr. Campbell.
Just so I'm clear, so.
I was going to review.
Right, I know. Just so I'm clear. So what we're saying right now is, we certainly have put some placeholders in line for dates for those things that would be in Phase 2 and 3 potentially. But what we're saying right now is that we are fully comfortable with move for, moving forward with, with the Phase 1, and that at Phase 1, we want to evaluate.
Correct.
And my question to Attorney Powers from a contractual obligation, do we have the ability to say at Phase 1, we're ending the contract? If that, I mean, if that's the direction of the board? I'm, I'm just, I, I don't know how that works, because, I mean, they have a full contract for the full gamut, and if we say, we don't want to continue this process, and we're good with what we've got, I mean, that's all hypothetical, certainly.
Yeah, I would need to get with Mr. Collins, because he's the one that started with the drafting of the RFP, and ensure that our answers match on that, because he's got different considerations than I do.
Sure. Okay. But that's what I'm hearing from.
That is what I.
That we're wanting to say, go through Phase 1, absolutely, community groups, our interviews with our, all the things that we, you need to do with us in Phase 1, and once we get that community feedback, and we'll see what that looks like, then we'll have additional conversation at that point.
Ms. Thrower.
One of my biggest reasons for saying this is that we were very clear as a board that April 15, I think, was a date for every good reason, you know, to give whoever is our superintendent, you know, the right starting point, in our collective opinions, to best position them for success. You know, that's what we try to do for each and every child, it shouldn't be any different for each and every superintendent. So that's where I am.
Okay.
And in, in general, I'll refer to, it'd be page 3 of our contract, item number 8, term and termination. So essentially, yes, I think we can, we can use a, we pay for services that we would actually use, but I'll let that conversation evolve amongst the board, and, and I'll talk to Mr. Collins regarding that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Powers. Yes, Mr. Adams.
As you consider the timeline, obviously, it's whatever timeline you, the board, decide. The RFP we responded to did not have those earlier dates in it. I, I don't know the document that, that you're looking at, but I'm talking about the, the one that was advertised that, that we responded to. We can always adjust timelines. You need to, at least, we believe, be clear at the end of the stakeholder engagement process as to where you're going at that time. It's going to be very difficult to recruit applicants if, well, the board may or may not hire a superintendent from outside, the board may decide to stay internally. Typically, when we have internal candidates, two things happen. We treat internal candidates the same as any other candidate, and if the information gathered shows that the internal candidate was the best candidate, then that also gives credence to that person being the best person out there that, that could be found. As far as the start date, sure, there's an advantage if the person starts before July 1. Typically, most superintendent searches, we do, the person starts when the fiscal year begins. But there are advantages to having been on board before that. And that's a decision you'll make at that time. Things can be compressed. Also, keep in mind that most superintendents have a contractual responsibility, and it may require 60, 90 days, six months. All of that becomes part of negotiations when you, you start moving dates around. And yes, some things can be compressed. Generally, we like 45 days minimum to recruit. Beyond 60 days doesn't yield a whole lot. It's been done in 30 days. That, there are considerations that can all, all be taken, but always keep in mind, whatever date you're looking at, there's some kind of notice requirement, unless it's someone from within. So I'm taking from what we've heard, we're not to post this position beginning.
On the website. Post the date. Yeah, I think, I think the board is in agreeance that we want to go through Phase 1. We want to get all of the stakeholder input, and then we want to pause to reconvene ourselves and, and discuss that, what, what you receive.
To his point, though, Phase 1 encompasses posting the position, the initial posting, which is supposed to occur next week. So I think what they're getting clarification on is, are we skipping step 1 of Phase 1?
Yeah, we're, we're just asking for clarification. Are we to post a position or not to post a position?
I, my preference would be in line with Chair Conrad, which is to hold off on posting the position, let's involve our community, and then move forward. But obviously, we need three board members to agree to that, so.
I, I just don't want to waste anyone's time. And so, to me, that's what, that's what I'm thinking. I, I think it's valuable for us to, to collect information from our community first, and then make that determining factor, but I'll hear from the rest of the board. Dr. Campbell.
So with that in mind, then, if we were to receive the information then on December 1, which is when we're talking about having the characteristics presented to the board, we could potentially make a determination then to open the position on December 2, and then the application deadline being January 30? I'm just trying to see how we get back in this timeline if we make a decision to. And so is a two-month window sufficient enough through the holidays for us to have a position open? I know that right now, the timeline would have four months.
Yeah, it, it certainly, from a recruitment standpoint, is there. We like to get the position out there as soon as possible, to get people to think about it, even though we're not formally recruiting. So we, we will lose that, you know, roughly seven weeks to eight weeks as a result of doing nothing between now and then, other than focusing on engagement, which would be where we'd be focusing anyway. Typically, our protocol would be, after we leave this meeting, based on having a, a range of compensation, would be to post it within several days, so that it's out there on our website, which gets, as I said, roughly 25,000 hits a month. So we would, we would lose that, but we would still have the normal, what I would call the normal recruitment period, if you make a decision at that December meeting.
All right. Are you still comfortable with that, Dr. Campbell?
As, as long as we're comfortable as a board with the potential of having two months instead of four months of people being aware of this position being open, if, if that, and, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that, I just want to make sure everybody else is, whenever we're talking about the difference. Because if we make a determination December 1, that we want to get back in this timeline, I just want to make sure that it can continue on this timeline, and we don't have to actually change the dates even further.
Okay. Mr. Thrower.
I hope we don't have to get back in on this timeline, because it's not the one that we really.
Wanted.
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 Wanted, which is going to take a completely different conversation. So for today, as you shared, Chair, it appears we're in consensus for this next step and then go from there.
Okay. Anything further from the board? No? Okay. All right. Mr. Adams, do you feel comfortable with the conversation where we've landed?
Well, we have to be.
Okay. Well, I am, I still am looking forward to our partnership as we move forward and get community input and from other members in our community. So I'm looking forward to that.
Well, we're looking forward to moving with that step, and we'll begin to do that immediately, and we'll work with, obviously, we have that next meeting scheduled already, and we'll go from there. And as we come into that meeting, we'll also have, continue to look at calendar to see if there are any ways to adjust, given the complexities of the whole situation. That's all we have on our agenda, unless you have any other questions for us.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Oh, Ms. Rower.
It's not a question, I just really want to say thank you so much. I continue to be 1,000% confident that we have the right people standing in front of us to help guide us through this. We've only been through one appointed superintendent so far. As a board, we go deep, we deliberate, we reflect, we get more information, we try really hard to listen to our constituents and our school community and do our best to make the best decision. So I just wanted to share that. I have a lot of gratitude and appreciation for your years of experience and what you do and the twists and turns that these kinds of things can take. So thank you.
Thank you.
I too want to say thank you very much. Thank you for being here with us this morning, thank you for your presentation and also your patience as we worked through all the audio challenges this morning. So thank you very much, and I look forward to hearing from you soon.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, board, with that, it is 11:30. I would-
Public comment?
Oh, is there any public comment? Goodness gracious. Is there any public comment? Okay. None? What? Yes, that's what I'm going to say. With that, we're going to take a quick recess. It is, we're going to recess at 11:31. Thank you. Come back from recess. It is 11:42. Our next item, 5.1, Look Up Marion, and I believe Ms. Beth McCall is coming to visit with us this morning. Good morning. She's not quite to the podium yet.
Good morning. Beth McCall, 1714 Southeast 28th Street, Ocala, Florida. And before I start this, please note that with my hat with the CEP, anything that we can help with the search for surveys and focus groups, we are here to help you. I am here today to talk about Look Up Marion Put the Phone Down campaign. The mission of the Marion County Children's Alliance is to improve the lives of Marion County children. One of the main focuses is to bring organizations together that deal with our children, and this has gone on since we were founded in 2000, to, when there are problems or issues that arise with our children, we convene those organizations or we come up with a plan to help be a part of the solution. So this campaign, the Look Up Marion Put the Phone Down campaign, originated during our January general meeting of the Marion County Children's Alliance. We normally have 60 to 80 people at that meeting, depending on what the topic is. In January, we decided to turn that meeting into a focus group, and one of the topics was, what are the priority issues in 2025 that we need to address that affect our children and youth in Marion County? The number one issue at every single table was the mental health of our children and youth because of social media and screen time. So with that, a committee was formed from those, the CEOs of those groups that were there at that meeting. And the committee was formed and it was made up of members of these organizations, the Boys and Girls Club, Kimberly Center, the Pearl Project, NAMI, Interfaith, Harlow's Helping Hands, the Public Education Foundation, and Marion County Public Schools, and many other community leaders. The committee decided to run an initiative to encourage our community to put down the phone and engage with loved ones and friends. The Look Up Marion Put the Phone Down campaign was created. And I have to tell you that Casey Griffith and Megan Magamal have been a very big part of this committee and have helped tremendously in engaging with the schools. The legislation was passed to eliminate phones in elementary and middle schools, and I am hearing that it is already having a positive impact. And I want to say thank you to the Florida Legislature for taking this very bold and courageous step. The Children's Alliance and the partners want to take that step just a bit further and promote a day for our community to put down the phones and engage with family and friends. We all know that our screens are here to stay, but let's moderate that use and let's really begin engaging with our families. So this campaign is in two parts. You have a RAC card that put down the phone day, which is going to be November 15. It has been created to provide ideas on things to do in Marion County. We have a website, Look Up Marion, which is here, which goes live on Monday, the 6. With that website, there is a guide, a resource guide on the website that has lots, lots of information for helpful tips and healthy screen use. We also have, the other handout that you have is a pledge. The pledge is for families to use. This is not to get back to us. This is to make our families accountable for putting their phone down and engaging. The website has resources. We have partnered with many, you will see on this RAC card, all of the partners that we have partnered with. On the website is all of the city and county park and recreation information, library information, where they can look to see what else is going on in Marion County, what can I do? You know, there's a lot of parents who really don't know what to do a lot of times with their children, other than their screens. So we're hoping that this becomes a day, an annual day, to make people think about other things to do. The QR code on the RAC card will take you directly to that website, and there is tremendous, tremendous information. It's live on Monday, everything goes live on Monday. The second part- The second part of the campaign will be the Look Up Marion Summit on December the third at eight o'clock at the College of Central Florida Klein Center. Now, I know some of you will be at FSBA Conference, but that is the normal day of our alliance meeting, so we wanted to be sure that that date stayed the same. So, nationally-known speaker Mandy Hammond of ScreenStar will talk on kids' brains and screens. And the morning breakfast, eight o'clock meeting, will be for our community, for parents, for community leaders, for business leaders. With my CEP hat on, I talk to businesses all the time that say, we just want to hire people that can look us in the eye, that know how to have a handshake, and that know how to have a conversation with words, instead of this. So, it's a big problem, not just with our family engagement, but with our whole community. So, nationally-known speaker Mandy Hammond of ScreenStar, she will talk. And then, we're hoping that later that morning, she can get in front of some of our middle school students and be videoed to later, to hopefully later use with our secondary students. She is nationally known, ScreenStrong is a nationally-known organization that are experts in this field, so we're working with Ms. Adele Nadal, and Megan Magamal, and Casey Griffith, to really get this all put together so that it fits into your guidelines, but that it can be useful, possibly used during your habitudes time. The next part of it will be the Golden Apple Teacher Academy will be hosting a workshop with Ms. Hammond in the afternoon, and Megan is already working with her on what does that look like. All of this brought to you by the Children's Alliance at no cost to you. So, we would ask that you encourage schools to participate by placing our yard signs, which I have for you as well, at their schools, and asking them to go to the website, asking parents to go to the website to look for resources. I think when you see the resources that are on the Look Up Marion website, you would encourage parents to go to that. Put it up on their marquee the week of November fifteenth, so that they will know to put down their phone. We will also share a flyer that you can use on the flyer that is on your screen now, that you can post on Peachjar. Again, that QR code goes directly to the Look Up Marion website. So, we hope you will join the Marion County Children's Alliance and community partners for Look Up Marion Put Down the Phone. Help us take a stand for our kids, our health, and our community, one unplugged moment at a time. And I will take any questions at all, and we do have signs for you, and Casey can get them all to you.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. McCall, and for waiting all morning long to give us this wonderful message. Board, you have anything you'd like to share, comment, question that you'd, for Ms. McCall? Go ahead.
Just thank you. This is something that, when you were on the board with us, we started championing, that we all know that all of us are on our phones way too much, and it's so distracting for instructional and everything else. So, thank you for making this into a bright campaign, and that's kind of seems ironic, but I just put the date in my phone. So, the county is working tremendously with us, the sheriff has given us all of his PSA times. I have seen the PSA, we've got just a tweak to it. It's pretty powerful and sends a very good message, so you'll start seeing that. So, you'll start seeing a lot of information, starting Monday.
Looking forward to that. Anything else? Yes?
The pledge, is this something that the campaign is willing to provide to schools, for the schools to distribute to students?
Absolutely, and it is digital. It is on the website, and it is digital, but we can certainly supply, we can have as many printed as you would like, but it is on the website for them to use.
So, it has a landing page on the website that can be completed and submitted?
Yes.
Okay, the pledge can...
That they can...
On their phone?
Print off, yes, so they can do it on their phone, you know, and it's just... The pledge was designed to get students and families talking about alternatives, so that's what it is.
Well, and I'm just thinking, Dr. Brewer, is there a way, or maybe Mr. Whitehouse, is there a way we can integrate this conversation in the weeks leading into November fifteenth, into homeroom, or into bell work, or subject area, so that we could then have the students pull it up on their Chromebook, because they all have a device, and potentially make their own personal decision to make the pledge in class?
They can pull it up, we can have it printed off, we can supply it for Peachjar, whatever you would like us to do with that, we certainly can.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. McCall. Thank you. We have, every single principal we speak to in middle school, just, that's the first thing they say, is what a difference this year has been, has the change with the students not getting off the bus with the phone, not constantly walking the halls with the phone. So, we, we're just so grateful, and we're looking forward to the success of those students this year, based on that. And so, this campaign just brings it into the house where we know it's needed. We're all guilty, and so, I fully, I will commit to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McCall. Super excited about this.
We are too, and be looking for more. We're focusing, of course, right now on the fifteenth, registration for the Look Up Summit will also be on this landing page. There's going to be lots of information on this page.
What's the cost for the summit?
It's twenty dollars. Yes.
And if someone wanted to get, in the community, wanted to get a yard sign, where would they go?
So, they can go to the website and let me know, or I can certainly supply my information. They can contact me at the Marion County Children's Alliance, and I will give that email right now, executivedirector@mchildrensaliance.org.
Right. Thank you very much. Anything else?
Thank you.
Yes. All right, do we have any public comment? Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Ms. McCall. All right, Dr. Brewer, do you want to do the intro for our next item?
Yes, Mr. Whitehouse will provide the introduction. This was a requested item by the board a few months ago, and, or just a month ago, actually. And not only is he going to introduce our other team members here today to provide the presentation, but he has been in the field speaking to the gifted teachers, and so, I, he's ready for the presentation, and then we know that we will probably have extra questions that we will need to address after the presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Whitehouse.
Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Brewer, board chair, board members. We are here to provide you with an overview of our gifted program services for Marion County Public Schools, and also talk about at the end, some of our next steps for how we're going to continue to grow the program. So, with me today, this is certainly not a one-man operation, Ms. Yvette Donodall with Mental Health and Wellness, and Ms. Anna Williams Jones with ESE are here to share some information as well. While gifted services lies under the umbrella of ESE, it certainly is a partnership between these departments and all of our schools to make sure that we are screening, identifying, and then providing services for our students. So, Florida defines a gifted student as a student with superior intellectual development and capable of higher performance. The eligibility for gifted is laid out within state statute and in Florida Administrative Code, which is listed there for you. Eligible students have what is called an educational plan, or an EP, developed once they've been identified for gifted services, and those must be reviewed every three years, according to state rule, and four years once they hit ninth grade. Our special programs that are available in the state of Florida can include consultation services, special classes, or pull-out or push-in programs. So, here you'll see the Florida Plan for Gifted Education. The state of Florida has their own plan laid out on the Department of Education website, which sets a focus for school districts to ensure the high expectations and achievement for our gifted learners. It's broken down into seven different areas, and districts develop their plan around these seven areas, and provide assurances that we are going to meet all of these. So, that includes a system for screening and identifying our gifted students, a continuum of service models with an acceleration plan, development of meaningful education plans for those students, guidance and counseling strategies to provide emotional support for those students, monitoring to ensure student progress, professional development for our gifted education teachers and staff, and a system for evaluating our gifted services. So, our presentation today is going to outline each of those seven areas, so that you can see how Marion County is addressing those assurances. So, to start, I just want to provide you with basic statistics for Marion County Public Schools. So, currently, we have four point seven percent of our total enrollment are identified as gifted and talented. If you were to compare that to the state or national statistics, the U.S. Department of Education estimates that roughly five percent of students nationally are serviced as a gifted and talented student. And in Florida, that statistic is also roughly five percent of all students in the state of Florida are identified, so you'll see that we are within that threshold of expectation for gifted students here in Marion County. And now, I will turn it over to Ms. Adele Nadal, who's going to talk about the first part of those assurances, which is the screening identification process.
I've got about thirty seconds of morning left.
Good morning.
So, morning. I'm going to speak to screening and identification procedures for gifted programming. As you can see on the slide, students can be nominated for a gifted evaluation, or we can also use a universal screening procedure we have in the past. A universal screener for all second-grade students was instituted at ten elementary schools during a pilot program in the spring of two thousand and twenty-three. The instrument used was the Naglieri General Abilities Test, or NGAT. This universal screener was then administered to all second-grade students across all elementary schools during the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four school year and the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Students meeting the required score were then referred for further evaluation to determine eligibility for gifted services. Outside of the universal screener, students may be nominated for gifted screening and evaluation as well. Following a nomination from a teacher or a parent, school counselors obtain parent permission for screening procedures. This includes sensory screenings to rule out any vision or hearing issues that may impact testing, as well as the administration of the Kaufman Brief Intelligence Test Second Edition Revised, known as the KBIT two R. Based on the obtained score, a referral for psychological evaluation is submitted for these eligible students. The referral includes documentation of parent consent for the evaluation, a statement of need from the student's teacher, and a completed Indicators of Giftedness Teacher Observations Form, or IGTO. We love to create acronyms and names for stuff. The IGTO was designed to collect information regarding gifted characteristics observed in the school setting. Information is obtained from multiple sources, to include the student's teacher or teachers, special area teachers, and other instructional staff with knowledge of and experience working with the student. Once completed, the referral for evaluation is submitted to the Mental Health and Wellness Following receipt of the notification that a referral for evaluation has been completed and submitted, the school psychologist begins the testing process. Psychological testing, for consideration of gifted eligibility, has a ninety-day timeline, meaning we have ninety school days from the time the parent consent has been obtained to complete the testing. This is excluding published district breaks, such as spring break, winter break, summer, et cetera. A psychological report is drafted, which provides referral information, testing observations, test scores, and interpretations. The completed psychological report is submitted, and notification is provided to the exceptional student education specialist, or ESE specialist. Following review of the submitted documentation for compliance purposes, the ESE specialist will schedule an eligibility meeting, where the ESE committee, which is comprised of those present at the meeting, will review scores and referral information to determine if the student has met criteria for gifted eligibility. It's important to note that, according to Florida's definition, gifted eligibility criteria includes documentation of a need for special education programming, documentation of a majority of characteristics of giftedness, according to a standard scale or checklist, and a documentation of superior intellectual development as measured by an intelligence quotient of two standard deviations or more above the mean of an individually administered standardized test of intelligence. Next up, we're going to talk about models.
I'm not sure if it's still morning or afternoon.
It's afternoon.
I think we're, we're on the verge, so, good afternoon. Today, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about how we serve the students who are actually identified for gifted services. When you look at our elementary models, we primarily use a pull-out model for instruction. That means that, on a designated day, students would go to visit the gifted teacher and spend the day working on those gifted standards and those gifted items that are identified in their educational plan. This year, we've looked at the needs of our students, and in talking with building administrators, so, and tried to minimize the number of students that are on buses for gifted. So, this year, instead of having all of our students travel, we actually have some of our gifted teachers that are traveling. So, in some of our schools, we have full-time gifted teachers, because the number of students allow for those services. Many of our gifted teachers, however, are serving multiple schools based on the numbers, and to ensure that each student has access to a gifted-endorsed teacher. So, this year, we will have, for example, a teacher that is serving two schools, but instead of the students traveling, the principals at those buildings have set aside dedicated space for gifted services, and so, those teachers are traveling to those campuses to maximize the amount of time that students have access to them, and minimize the amount of time that students are spending traveling on our buses. So, as you look at the services that we are providing for our elementary students, the instruction is grade-level aligned, emphasizing critical thinking, creativity, and self-regulation. In addition to the direct services that are provided to our students, there are also some students who receive consultation. In a consultation model, the gifted teacher is consulting with the gen ed classroom teacher to talk about ways in which enrichment activities can be provided, but that student is not receiving a direct service from the teacher. This year, we've been really pleased to be able to offer enrichment services in partnership with our gifted teachers on our elementary campuses. As Ms. Nadal talked about, the screening process that we've used at second grade for the last couple of years, we noticed that we were identifying a lot of very academically talented students who were not qualifying for the gifted program based on their actual scores. And so, the thought was, how do we provide a little bit of extra for these students, so that if they have a referral at a later date, perhaps they might qualify at that time? But also, because we know that these students are already demonstrating high academic performance, we wanted to have ways in which to continually engage those students in the learning process, because we know that they're already performing at a high level. And so, our elementary schools each have a day in which enrichment services are provided to students who can be teacher-nominated, but also who are students who may have been tested for gifted in the past and not qualified. And so, although they're not using explicitly the gifted EP as guidance, they are looking at those gifted areas that are identified by the state, and using project-based learning and other supports to increase the academic engagement of these students through an enrichment So, when we get to our secondary programs for gifted, starting with middle school, the services shift from the pull-out model to actually being able to offer courses with a gifted designation. So, all of our middle schools have gifted courses that are available for students with a gifted course code. Most of those courses are in science and social studies, including civics and world history. And so, in providing this information to me, Bellevue Middle offers all science, and then en... including civics and advanced history. Donnellan Middle, all the sciences, earth science, life science, and physical science, have a gifted course code. For Fort King, U.S. History, civics, and then advanced U.S. History. Fort McCoy, world history, civics advanced, and U.S. History. Howard Middle, world history, civics advanced, and then physical science. Lake Weir Middle, earth science, life science, and physical science. Liberty Middle, world history and civics advanced. North Marion Middle, world history advanced, civics, and they actually have an English One Honors eighth grade that has a gifted course code designation. And then at Osceola Middle, earth science, advanced science, civics advanced, and then physical science. And so as you look at how we support students in middle school, there starts to be the competition with if they're in a Cambridge School, their course offerings, if they're at an IB school, their course offerings. And so there is an opportunity for those students that we know are academically talented and those who are identified as gifted to have a broader array of what's available than in middle, than in elementary school. However, these campuses do offer, for those students who are interested in taking them, these courses that actually have a gifted course code designation. And so those aren't determined by the district, those are determined by each school, looking at the staff that they have, and then the supports that they're able to provide in that area.
Is it possible for me to just make a quick statement? If that's okay. I, what you just said, and I, because I want to capture what you just said. What you just said was that the delivery model is decided on, based on the staff we have at a school site.
Principals get to make
Right.
scheduling decisions at the secondary level, yes.
I would argue the delivery model, as with all ESE students, should be framed around the unique needs and abilities of the student that we are servicing. We would never, we would never programmatically develop units around the certifications of a ESE teacher on the other end of the spectrum on a campus. We would look at the students who are zoned at a school, and then maybe we place a hub unit and transport students in, and then hire the qualified educator for that group of students, right? And so I struggle with the philosophy that we are determining delivery model based on the expertise of the teachers currently on campus. And if I missed out on clarity on that, I'm sure there are board members who would be willing to fill in the gap for me, but that is my struggle, and I apologize for interjecting, but I wanted to capitalize on the statement you said because I knew I would get lost in it by the end. So thank you for allowing the interjection.
And so to offer some additional clarification on that, when you look at a gifted certified teacher, or, and actually, it's a gifted endorsed teacher because there's not truly a certification for gifted, like there is a teacher certification. A gifted endorsement is an add-on. So a teacher has a certification in science, or math, or history, or whatever that content is, especially as we're talking about secondary. And then that teacher goes through the additional coursework, it's 15 hours, for that endorsement, which allows them to be then considered a gifted teacher and then teach students who have a gifted designation. So I can't speak for building principals because I don't hire their staff, and that's outside my scope, but what I do know is that in having conversations about gifted supports at middle school, there are not as many gifted endorsed teachers along with the content area. And so those are conversations that are going to be above decisions that I could make about how, as a district, we're able to then support hiring more gifted endorsed teachers at the middle school level, potentially high school level, making some incentives for being, for teachers going back to get that. But then also the reality of looking at schedules on a high school campus or a middle school campus and determining how many students would actually then be signing up for those classes, and then looking at those teaching caseloads. So to your point, Dr. James, I absolutely understand what you're saying. I think some of it, though, is driven by the availability of the appropriately endorsed staff to provide instruction with gifted designation across content, if that's helpful.
Yeah, and I agree. I think the point I'm making is we would never make that determination on the other end of the spectrum. Like, we would never, we would never lead with that, we would never lead with that delivery model on the other end of the spectrum. So if we're not doing that on the other end of the spectrum, why are we then doing it on this end of the spectrum? So, and I think that's going to lead into the further conversation we're going to have as a board about delivery model in the secondary realm, at least middle school. But, yeah. Mr. Whitehouse.
I do just want to interject. While providing students a course with a gifted endorsed teacher is a way that we can provide gifted services, the state also endorses an acceleration model in general to provide students who are gifted and talented that acceleration in those particular areas. So when we have those EP meetings, having conversations around where is the strength of that student and what is the best need for them academically at that school, which could be taking civics with a gifted endorsed teacher, or it could be placing a sixth grader into Algebra I as a high school course, doesn't have to be a gifted endorsed teacher, but does provide them that acceleration piece that they need based on their specific skills.
There are other options beyond those two, though.
Yes.
That we have yet to explore as a district.
So clarify, because the options are consultation, special courses, or push-in or pull-out models.
Correct, but special courses, not specific to a content area. You could have an elective, the gifted delivery model that I received as a gifted student, not in this district, was an elective course in middle school that was unique and defined for gifted learners, where we did stock trading and built robots and did all kinds of really cool problem-solving, puzzle-like, skill-based projects to expand all kinds of gifted learners' brains. I didn't like science. I have a liberal arts degree. I didn't like math. I didn't take Math Beyond Statistics at the community college when I was in high school because I don't like math. So math and science enrichment would have been lost on me as a middle school student, and I'm not a unique learner in that way. There are a lot of students similar to me. So there are other ways in which we can expand our delivery model to include a gifted elective that would be more appropriate and modeling after what we do in elementary. Because in fifth grade, students are going to a pull-out model where they spend all day in a classroom, learning in unique ways. And then we go to secondary, and it's like over the summer now, all of a sudden, that's no longer appropriate, and what is appropriate is Algebra I for a sixth grader.
So I don't disagree, but I'll also add into that, that the need is driven by the desire of the students.
Totally.
And what they want to do, because they're a part of that EP conversation. And the vast majority of our middle school students, they're not interested in taking a course that's just gifted. They're already focused on what they want to do in high school and beyond, and we have so many opportunities in our middle schools through our CTE programs, through our advanced high school programs, dual enrollment opportunities for students to choose that route, that we couldn't simply say, we're going to place these students in there. We really work with what is the need of the student. And I think if you talk with middle school students, most of them would prefer to take a health science course. They would prefer to take an agriculture course. They would prefer to take high school classes that they can get a leg up on, moving themselves forward, than simply taking a gifted class in itself.
Well, the option hasn't been presented, so I wouldn't want any of us to presume what middle schoolers would do since we have failed to offer the option.
Certainly.
Oh, I have a lot, but we'll wait till the end. Thank you.
All right.
So when we look at the service delivery model that we have in our high schools, that is primarily a consultation model, where our gifted teachers are meeting directly with the individual students to support the academic needs, questions that they may have. A lot of my conversation with high school gifted teachers about the ways in which they support, center around those social-emotional needs of some of our gifted students. There is an assumption that our gifted students are always our highest performers, especially when they get to high school, and that is simply not the case for a variety of reasons. Oftentimes, students are less motivated because the work is easy for them, and so they haven't developed some of those strong skills which allow them to demonstrate actually what it is that they know. And so having opportunities for the gifted teachers to actually meet with them, to talk about what their goals and their interests are, and help to keep them connected to the school environment so they actually are motivated to finish because they sometimes lack the why. You know, I can take my SATs and get, you know, a 1,200. Why am I coming to this class every day to do this work? And so that is a lot of what our gifted teachers at the high school level spend, is in that dialogue with students, helping them to understand the why and create those goals for their future. So when we look at the development of the educational plans, the team members are obviously going to be the parents and guardians. Their importance, impact is very important. At least one regular education teacher, gifted teacher, the ESE specialist, and then the student when appropriate. The components of the educational plan is to set measurable goals that are aligned with the student's strengths, determine services and supports, whether that's enrichment or acceleration, specify how and where the services will be delivered, and include parent input and concerns. Often, what we will see on the educational plans, in addition to an academic focus, is really a focus on social-emotional development. When we look at our very talented students, who are often very perfectionistic, or who have difficulty working with the group, because I don't want to work in a group with people who aren't as smart as me because my work's not going to be correct. And so those are some of the social and emotional skills that are targeted as part of the educational plan to just help our students become more rounded, well-rounded. So when we look at the guidance and counseling strategies, and these are things that are in alignment with what the state recommends, it's not counseling services per se, but really looking at academic and resiliency guidance, looking to help students understand how to address perfectionism, anxiety, and underachievement, support the development of study skills, time management, and self-advocacy. And so our school counselors at all levels do a really good job at serving as a liaison between families, teachers, and gifted staff. And the school counselors are also going to support transition between the grade levels. They work in conjunction with the gifted and ESE staff to maintain accurate records related to gifted referrals and services, and to assist in tracking student progress and service delivery. So when we're looking at monitoring student progress, there are a variety of data points that are used to be able to keep a pulse on how our gifted students are functioning. Consultation logs, which are maintained by our gifted teachers, really look at the student's progress towards those goals that are on the educational plan. There is also teacher collaboration. It is very important that our gifted teachers and our Gen Ed classroom teachers are in constant communication. Students are missing a full day of academics when they go to gifted services, although there's no penalty and they are not required to make up the work that they're, when they're missed. These are highly anxious kids who want to be able to do everything. And so sometimes ensuring that there is that collaboration between the classroom teachers and the gifted teachers to make sure that students are comfortable, that they aren't missing assignments, and that there is a connection between the work that they're doing in the two settings is important. Student check-ins, to look at, assess engagement, well-being, and academic progress of students. Progress monitoring in gifted courses, which is looking at the subjects-based instruction through assessments and progress-based learning. And then EP goal alignment. Mr. Whitehouse talked about earlier how it is every three years that we, you know, are statutorily required to revise the EP. But there may be things that are happening at any moment in time where a parent or a teacher can request a meeting to come back and take a look at those goals that are on the educational plan to ensure that the student is getting the maximum benefit from those gifted services. For professional development, the gifted resource teacher at the district works closely with the school-based gifted teachers. There is a yearly gifted calendar for professional learning that is in place. There are typically two professional learning opportunities per quarter. In addition to that, there are different speakers that come in. We work with them on the other side of the ESE house on things like using the peer platform appropriately, supporting writing appropriate goals, and looking at that. We have a contract with the project-based learning, which is an opportunity, all of our gifted teachers have access and get the weekly emails. It really focuses on project-based learning. At times, they offer professional learning opportunities to our gifted teachers as well. So the key offerings that they provide are critical thinking exercises, STEM challenges, writing and literacy prompts, career exploration, and SEL resources. So these are things that are regularly provided for our gifted teachers. So in evaluating gifted services, it really looks at student progress monitoring, teacher feedback, and collaboration. Access review, analyzing that referral data, making sure that we are actually capturing those students who may benefit from gifted supports, professional development impact, and then an annual program review. Our gifted resource teacher spends a lot of time getting input and collaborating with our gifted teachers so that each year we are better prepared to meet the needs of our gifted teachers so that they are then better able to meet the needs of our gifted students. So the next steps, we're really looking to strengthen our identification. Part of the state emphasis is on identifying students who are in underrepresented groups. And just for clarification purposes, when we look at underrepresented students, we're not talking about identification based on race. Underidentified groups are based on SEL, I mean, on socioeconomic status and limited language proficiency. And so that is a big area where we need to improve our identification, ensuring that our screening tools are accurately measuring what we're hoping the outcomes to be. Ms. Del Nadal talked about the three years that we've invested in the online screening. The reality is that we haven't identified as many students as we would have hoped for the investment that we had in that mass screening at second grade. So looking to fine-tune so that once we implement a screening tool, that for those students who make it past the screening, we have a better opportunity for those students to actually be identified as gifted and then to receive those services. Enhancing our program design and delivery, really looking at the frameworks to make sure that our gifted courses and our gifted experiences for students are rigorous, and to increase the enrichment opportunities for our high-achieving and talented students. The last area is really looking at improving curriculum and instruction, making sure that our gifted instruction is aligned with state standards, increasing the incorporation of project-based interdisciplinary and inquiry-driven learning, and to provide differentiated curriculum that supports depth, complexity, and acceleration. and to provide differentiated curriculum that supports depth, complexity, and acceleration. And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Brewer for any comments that she has before we open it up to the board for their questions and comments.
Thank you very much.
I do just want to give you some numbers for our secondary gifted teachers. We have thirty-six in the district, and those are at twelve schools. So I know Ms. Williams Jones shared with you it's a fifteen extra-hour add-on endorsement. So I just wanted to be able to provide you the actual numbers of those teachers. And so now we are available for any questions or comments, concerns you have. Chair.
Thank you very much.
All right, Dr. Campbell, we'll start with you.
You already shared that she had a list, so.
That's okay. Dr. James can start if you want. That's fine.
I'm cool with whatever, but I just have, I have a few, I guess, guiding thoughts more than anything. I don't really have a lot of questions. I guess the only question I would ask to be followed up with is updated screener data. Probably as soon as Ms. Williams Jones came on board, we were having gifted conversations. Ms. Del Nadal and I have been basically talking about gifted since I got on the board. Mostly, I became very aware due to my own personal lived experiences with my children. And then as we are elected, we represent a group of people, and it was not lost on me that my unique experience was not unique, but in fact was representative of the experiences other people were having. And so Ms. Del Nadal and I started talking about gifted. Ms. Williams Jones came on board, and we've kind of been having this conversation for two years. So the screener, I would love, as a follow-up, to receive updated screener data. So over the course of the last two years that we've done the universal screener, how many students did we screen, and then how many made it to full psych, and how many qualified from full psych? So in comparison to how many kids were we identifying? If you have that data now, that's awesome, but I didn't want to put you on the spot to have it if you didn't.
I believe Ms. Del Nadal may have some.
Some, okay. Okay.
Just to whet your appetite. So as far as for the screener, I have twenty-two, twenty-five data. So for last year, with students that were actually referred after that second-grade screener, we had a hundred and two students that were referred. Of that, sixteen percent actually were found eligible for gifted.
Okay, sixteen?
Sixteen percent.
Yes.
Very low hit rate.
And so to give you the numbers on the front end, because we worked with the company to actually purchase the seeds, we purchased three thousand seeds for second graders to be screened for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And of those three thousand students who were screened, this was the result.
And what, what is the actual number for, I could do the, we don't want me to do math from the dais, so I had thrown a joke there. So how many, what does that sixteen percent represent?
From the one hundred and two students.
Okay, okay, it was a hundred and two, so I can do that math pretty quickly, about sixteen kids. So of three thousand, we paid for three thousand screeners. We identified sixteen students. My question would be historically, how many second graders do we identify? Prior to implementing the screener in twenty-twenty-three, really, we could say twenty-four because last year was the first year we did it district-wide. The prior year was a pilot for ten schools, right? Or was it the pilot the year before the three schools? Okay, so if we take it all the way back to, to when we started the pilot, how many kids prior to that were we identifying in second grade? What was our trend? What was our percentage of the second-grade population? Yes, and I understand you'd have to look into that, but that would be some important data for us to understand. I can appreciate the use of a screener to throw a wide net, but I have personal information about screeners that I find to be problematic. I think not, I would also love to know how many of those second graders that we screened that did not qualify will later qualify for gifted, given the opportunity for a full psych. My own child took the KBIT and got a one oh nine. And I moved forward with a private full psych in kindergarten, a private full psych, and I won't share her full-scale IQ, but she's gifted. And so to the tune of twenty-five-plus points difference. So my concern is that we're using a tool that is not only under, but over identifying. It is lacks consistency, and whether that's in the screener who's implementing the tool or the tool itself, there is a lack of consistency. And so we are not capturing, the goal of what we are trying to do, I believe, is being lost in either implementation or the tool itself. And so we really, I believe, need to revitalize and review what we're doing with the screener because it's not, it's not working, in my professional opinion. I, I think that it's a twenty-five-point difference from a screener to a full psych is, is a pretty significant variation in score for a, for a six-year-old. And so I, I just think there's a lot of room for improvement there. And as we leave today, one of the things I would like to see us work on is fine-tuning what that looks like. I think there is tons of opportunity to identify kids we're not traditionally identifying because they don't look gifted or act gifted, which is why we're doing a universal screener. But it's not working the way we want it to work, so we need to, in my opinion, need to do something different to get a better result.
And so to just make a distinction there, so we were talking about the universal screener, which was the N-GAT, right?
Yes.
And that was a sixteen percent hit rate. When we're talking about the KBIT, which we're using for nominations.
Yes.
So the way I kind of look at it is the N-GAT is like casting out a net. Who do we grab, and then who do we test after that? Whereas the KBIT is more like a filter. Here are nominations. From that nomination, let's filter who would move on for testing. The hit rate for the KBIT was forty-five percent. So of the students nominated for gifted last year, then forty-five percent of those students that took the KBIT moved forward for testing.
And that number is, still, that's only the students we internally move forward from the KBIT, right? So again, there are students who didn't make the filter with the KBIT, who then, like my own child, were privately evaluated and then qualified. So I think that there are still gaps, and like, like any data or statistics set, there are going to be holes. I just think we have more holes than we think we have, and more inconsistencies than we think we have, and we need to continue to spend energy fine-tuning how, how we get there. That's my professional opinion. So I, I can certainly talk delivery model too, but I don't know if there are other comments about the screener maybe that we want to talk about before. I don't know, Chair, how you want to go about it, but maybe if that would help, yeah.
I think that's good. Dr. Campbell, you have screener comments?
Yeah, I have. Questions and comments, yes. So just to make sure that I'm clear, when we're saying screener and you're giving us statistics, are we talking the Naglieri or are we talking KBIT?
The Naglieri is the universal screener.
Okay.
The KBIT is for nominations.
Okay, all right. So on the Naglieri screener, are we using the total score? Okay, so it's possible that a student potentially scored a one forty in one category on the Naglieri, but actually got a one oh nine as the total score. And so we're not letting this child that would get a higher score in some area of the Naglieri, or even more than one area, not then advance to the KBIT. Is that correct?
Correct. We don't use partial scores for the.
Yeah. Okay, so I think that's part of the challenge, potentially, because the non-verbal components of the screener, specifically those that would be impactful for students of other languages perhaps, is without looking at that piece of it. So I, I mean, the KBIT itself is a very language-heavy test, screener, whatever you want to call it. And so I think we're excluding an entire group of students who potentially are in need of gifted services. Their brains are going to operate differently. They're going to, they're going to think of things differently, more creatively, more whatever, potentially in other, speakers of other languages and all. The, the non-verbal strengths may be very, very high that would then classify them for gifted, but we're not even considering them because of how we're looking at total scores. My, my understanding, and, and I mean, I've, I've spoken with a half dozen or so of our gifted endorsed educators in the district, my understanding is that even Dr. Naglieri has talked to the district about how we're currently using the model, and he doesn't even recommend, and actually would like to tell us how to better use his model because we're using a total score instead of actually segregating it out and looking at more of the whole child as opposed to just one score on a test. Do you guys have knowledge of that, that he's willing to come here on his own dime to help us with that?
I haven't been privy to any conversations with Dr. Naglieri about the better use of, but, but the Naglieri is a screener. And so I think part of the problem when you use any screener is one, that the item selections are limited. And when you then go from a screener to a full intellectual measure, which has more validity and reliability, there's also often not the same level of performance for the student. And so to say that on the Naglieri that they got a one forty, that usually, because it's a very isolated area with a significant item set, students don't often perform because the cognitive score overall on an IQ test is going to measure multiple areas. And so you still see splinter scores. And so using that as the primary, which, and I haven't spoke, I know who Dr. Naglieri is. I haven't spoken to him about this, but most test manufacturers don't recommend taking a partial score as the overall identification of a student's cognitive potential. Because it is not a, what's the word I'm looking for? It is not going to be a reliable score potentially over time because it only measures one very specific concept. And so even when we do other IQ testing, students will have strengths. Some students are going to be more verbal, some students may be more visual-spatial. And if we see that pattern identified on an actual IQ test, then depending on the size of the discrepancy and the other parameters of the test, the psychologist can recommend use of a partial score. We allow for standard error of measure in certain instances. So it's not as discreetly identified as looking at one area that may be high to then extrapolate that into a need for a further evaluation. So I, and if he's willing to come and the district's willing to consider that, obviously, I, that's a decision that, that would be made beyond me, but it's still a screener, and so we still have to get students past that. And when we're looking at gifted eligibility, it's the screener, it's the gifted characteristics checklist, the IQ. Like, there are a lot of pieces that go into that. And so what we were finding prior to using the Naglieri screener was that we had students who might have had solid scores, which would have led to them being given an additional test, but the teachers didn't see the characteristics in the student. And so the gifted characteristics were not being identified, which is part of the state requirement. And so students were missing out on getting referred and nominated because teachers didn't see what they thought to be gifted, which is going to be true for our students who are potentially gifted but live in poverty. Because giftedness for students who come from environments that aren't necessarily language-rich and print-rich are going to look different from some of our other students. So this summer, between ESE and psychological services and school counseling, they worked together to revise the gifted characteristics checklist so that it was better after the training to help teachers really understand what we're looking for in gifted characteristics, not just the kid who's highly verbal, who sits at the front, who's really smart and is always performing. But how do we expand past that to talk about some of those kids who may be talented in some ways and get those characteristics to be identified? So we've been looking at the gifted process overall because we want to identify and give an opportunity for those gifted services to every student who has the potential to benefit from those services. And so we definitely appreciate the input in those areas because, you know, as this is kind of, you were using the KBIT here, you stopped. We went to the, to the universal screener for second grade. But we can identify students in every grade level for gifted. And so the focus had been on second because we were trying to cast that wide net. But I don't want people to think that we only refer in, in second grade so that any parent, any teacher who has a student that they think displays gifted characteristics can make a nomination for a student to be assessed for gifted. Then we go through the process of doing the screening, getting the gifted characteristics completed, and then looking to see which students go on for an actual individualized intelligence test. So I just want to make sure that we're clear that we're looking at giftedness across the spectrum, across the grade levels, and all students can be nominated, not just those in second grade.
Okay. So the KBIT as it stands, what is our current cut score and how has that changed over the past couple of years?
For regular gifted, the cut score is a one twenty, which is above average. And then for our underrepresented gifted is a one ten.
Okay, and.
Upper end of the average score.
And again, the underrepresented, we are classifying as those who are in socioeconomic, have socioeconomic challenges, or are English speakers of other languages. So they have a lower score. Is that because the portfolio might show that the teacher is not identifying them in the classroom with it? Or, or is that a state reason why we're, we have a different score for underrepresented?
It gives us the opportunity to use the matrix in the portfolio.
Okay, so only those students who are in those two underrepresented categories have the opportunity to present a portfolio? And is that a state standard or Marion County standard?
The state standard is.
Okay, so that is essentially penalizing any student in a two-person household that might have a higher income from having an opportunity to present a portfolio. And that's a state standard. That's fine. This board is absolutely attacking that at the state level. We're trying to change it at the state level, so trust me when I say that. But please hear what I just said because we have, yeah. So that, that's a challenge for me in general. I, I mean, I have, I have a lot of other questions. I don't know if you want me to just keep going with my questions or if we want to keep talking about the screener itself.
I, I actually do have a couple that go, go with this.
Go for it.
So. So coming from the school, I came from a school that had a lot of gifted students. And so one thing I, I just wanted to share is we also have classrooms that are set up to serve gifted students each and every day. So they go to school and every day they receive gifted services in reading, writing, math.
A cluster model, that's what's missing from the presentation.
So I, I just want to share that because it does meet all the things that, that, they concern me about many of the things that were mentioned for middle school. There's not a lot in math, there's not a lot in English. It was mostly social studies and science. That's where we're, you know, where we're getting our delivery model. So I, I wanted to share that there are opportunities at the elementary level to be in a gifted classroom. So all of your curriculum, you know, is enriched to meet the gifted child. The other question I have is, I have to get the word, the Naglieri, is that what it's called?
Naglieri.
Naglieri, yes. Is that one test or is it three tests?
Three areas. It's one test that they take. It's three areas.
Okay, because I'm being told it's three separate tests.
It's three areas that they test in, in the one test. Right. It's verbal, non-verbal, and quantitative.
Okay, and so there, there are a lot of parents that are not passing the screener, and then they're going and getting privately tested, and their tests match these subsections that you are mentioning. So my question is, is if the net is to get more students into gifted, if that's what we're trying to do, why wouldn't we just allow the one forty, excuse me, in that area to go on and be screened with the KBIT? Why, why would it matter that it was a sub-test or it was the whole test?
So that's a tricky question.
Okay.
Because although we want to identify every child in Marion County that would benefit from gifted services, our goal is to identify underrepresented students. That is what the state is asking of us. Because of that four point seven percent of students in Marion County that are already identified as gifted, very few of them are from our underrepresented populations. And so when you look at our demographics in the district, and then you look at the students who are actually identified, we have a very large swath of our population who is economically disadvantaged. But the majority of our gifted students come from our population of students of, who are not economically disadvantaged. And so what we're trying to do is level the playing field in some ways. And so often by doing a universal screener, we are able to then cast in that wide net some of the students who are economically disadvantaged that for whatever reason may not be overtly displaying those characteristics. We're able to get a score that forces us to then take a deeper look. And so that was. And so that was the impetus behind, well, I wasn't here when it was initially rolled out. But because I've done the rollout for this similar in other districts, that's typically who we're hoping to cast in that net. Because often for our students who are not economically disadvantaged, their parents are going to refer them for screening or for a further look because they might have been gifted themselves. They see the same characteristics in their, in their children and they want to investigate. On the flip side of that, for our families who are economically disadvantaged, they don't even know what gifted is or that a nomination or a recommendation from them is even a possibility to start a process. And so that's why using a screener at a particular grade level like second often helps districts to be able to help identify more in those areas where the state has identified for us that we are underrepresented.
And again, I think part of the question was using those partial scores. So when you're talking about a screener and even when we're talking about a full IQ, those partial scores, the way we look at it is not robust enough to represent the child. And so if you're looking at, they're supposed to be, these screeners are supposed to be kind of predictive of whether when we move forward to full testing, they would likely meet the score that you would need for gifted. And so when you're looking at just those partial scores, it's not a robust enough measure to, to be predictive of that, if that makes sense.
It, it makes sense, I don't agree. And I, I really don't, I, I really don't care for the answer that we're giving a screener for a particular reason, for a particular population. Because this board member expects that if the screener is given, any child that shows signs or scores of being gifted should be moved on to the next stage regardless of what our numbers are in the district. So that to me is very disappointing.
I hope that I didn't give you the impression that that was why the screener was given. What that screener does, it helps us un-identify in areas where we under-identify. That screener was given to every child in second grade. Any child who met the cutoff score of one twenty for a non-economically disadvantaged or one ten was moved on for further testing. No one was screened out based on their economic status.
To me, it did sound like that's what.
So that's not what I was saying.
So my next question then would be, to me, it sounds like we have work to do with, with our instructional staff on identifying students. And so we're putting all of this energy into giving a test when why aren't our educators the ones who are with our children every day? You know, at the beginning of the school year? Why is there not a push for, hey, you know, these are the things we're looking for? There should be a training of some sort for our, our teachers to help identify gifted students.
And so that is in the works. We are partnering together to roll that out for teachers later this year, later this semester actually, so that we can talk about what giftedness looks like to try to dispel some of those stereotypical ideas about who gifted children are because they are much broader in characteristics than we typically think. And so we want to be able to help teachers create a different lens that they're able to look at students and say, you know, maybe they don't behave perfectly every day, but there are some things that I see about them. And perhaps they're misbehaving because they're bored. And that it's not a student who has a behavior disability as opposed to one who's just really academically talented. So we're, we are in the development of that. And so we will be presenting that in the near future so that our teachers can have a broader idea of what giftedness looks like.
Okay, and then my final question is, in the near future, I would like to know what the average time is for a student once they're, they've been given the screener, they qualify for the KBIT, and then they qualify because it's supposed to be ninety days, correct?
Ninety days from parent consent?
Of school days?
Of, of school days.
And that's for the full evaluation, so that's not including the screener.
You're going to have to go to the mic, it's still, I can't hear you.
So the ninety days is for the full evaluation? So that's when they get consent for the actual IQ testing?
Okay.
So that's not including the timeline of the screener? I think you want the full.
Okay, well, no, whatever is, whatever we're legally bound by. So if the ninety days is from?
From the time the parent signs that consent?
Okay.
To us finishing the testing.
Okay, that's what I want to know. How long is it taking us? Because I'm hearing that it's taking us way too long. So I, I would like some data on that and probably some information to go how we can improve that.
Chair, can I ask just a qualifying question real quick? What is the composite score required to qualify for gifted?
So one thirty is considered gifted. It's a superior IQ that occurs in about two percent of the population. So when we're looking at the statistical scores and it's a two standard deviation above the mean, the mean being a hundred, the standard deviation for a test like this is going to be fifteen points. So two standard deviations above the mean is going to be a hundred and thirty.
And that's for all students who qualify for gifted?
That is for students who are not in underrepresented groups.
Can you clarify what underrepresented groups is?
Underrepresented groups are students who are economically disadvantaged or second language learners. And so for that group, they have a matrix. So every part of the evaluation earns points. So they get points for the IQ score, they get points for the gifted characteristic checklist, and then there are some academic things that are looked at as well. Percentiles can be on state assessments and other things. But that then in a matrix is completed. And then if they hit the cut scores on the matrix, they would be eligible for gifted services.
So the only two delineating factors are economic status and second language learners?
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, and I have two more questions. One, I'd like to know how many KBIT kits we have? And is there a guideline or a statute on how long we have from the KBIT to the actual screen, from the screener to the KBIT?
No, the assessment guidelines that are in statute for gifted is ninety days from the parent consent. And for other evaluations for IEPs, it's sixty days from the parent consent.
Okay, and I, another piece, data point I'd like is, I'd like to know how many gifted students are at each school?
That, for elementary, I do have those numbers.
Okay, can you send them?
I can send those to you. I can send them to everyone on the board, but we do have those numbers. I had only asked for them for elementary prior today, but I can get them for all of our students, K-12, and then send those numbers out to you.
That would be great, thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
All right, any other questions from the board? Yes?
Yes, ma'am. So a, a couple of times there was referenced that the ESE committee would meet. And my question for you on the ESE team is how many members of your team are gifted endorsed? So if an ESE committee meets and that the ESE program, whomever on your ESE team, since we know that gifted falls under exceptional student education, which is something we're trying to change in statute. But my, my curiosity is how many members of your ESE team are gifted endorsed?
So for the ESE specialists that are actually out in the schools, I can't answer that question. Ms. Weber is my gifted program specialist, she's the resource teacher who supports with gifted and she's endorsed. But when I say the team, that's usually a combination of our team and Psychological Services because Psychological Services is the primary conduit, if you will. So school counselors handle the screening process at the school, whether we're doing an individual screening with a KBIT or if we're doing the second grade screenings in totality. That all originates at the school. When we met this summer to have conversations about the gifted characteristic checklist, some of that work had been done with Ms. Weber and the gifted teachers last year. That was then brought to Ms. Nadal's team, including school counselors. And then there was continuation of that process over the summer so that we would have a new checklist to roll out this fall. So the team, I'm not sure which team you're talking about because I don't, so.
There was a slide specifically that mentioned the ESE committee would meet. They would look at the documentation, the IQ.
So the eligibility team, so that gifted teacher is a part of that team? There's not an ESE team that meets separate from a group that's making decisions about gifted? So at the team, the ESE, the school team is going to be the gifted endorsed teacher, the ESE specialist, the classroom teacher, and then Ms. Weber, the gifted resource teacher who's gifted endorsed, if there's a need for that. But the gifted teacher is always in those meetings. We don't expect them to run the meetings. So that gifted teacher who's writing the EP is considered the expert in that meeting.
Okay, and we had gone about a year without having someone in that role, is that, is that correct?
For the gifted resource teacher, we went six months without having someone in that role. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and as far as the timeline? Because I, I have some questions specific about the timeline as well. I understand that the ninety days that you're speaking about, but as far as the time from which an identification may be made, potentially a recommendation from a teacher to the time the student actually receives the screening, what is that timeline? The parent has to sign off on the screening to occur? Or the screening occurs apart from that?
The parent has to sign the screening permission to give permission for us to do the screening, which includes vision and hearing as well as if we're doing the KBIT, unless it was the universal screener.
And by state law, that is ninety school days? That is a state law or that's a school or district policy?
Ninety school days starts from the time the parent is signing consent for evaluation for the full IQ.
Okay, so from the timeline that the parent signs off that their student is going to be screened, what's that timeline?
There's no set timeline.
Okay, so that's what potentially is going six months or longer, potentially, as I, I know has occurred multiple times. So because the only timeline we really have is the ninety school days from, yes, we've used the Nagliary or whatever it is that we've used to then identify. And now the parent signs off again that they can be screened even further and that's that ninety day clock that essentially if you get it in March that you're signing off on that, then you're actually not being identified until October?
They can be evaluated.
Or November? So potentially we've gone an entire year and a half. If the teacher identified, I'm just speaking out of experience in one scenario of my children. If the teacher identified in the third week of school that the child needed to be screened, that screening actually didn't happen until March or April. And then the actual further screening didn't happen until the next school year because again, that ninety school, I, I'm just, because we don't have a timeline set for, yes, this has been a personal, the parent wants their child screened. But we don't have a timeline district-wide as to when that screening needs to occur, the initial screening, that's the delay. Would you agree?
I mean, I, I couldn't speak to what kinds of delays we're having at different schools.
Sure.
But there's a potential for a delay there.
Okay, and as far as who has the ability to administer the KBIT then? That's the school counselor that is the one that administers that? Okay, and the KBIT kit, I guess they have to check out from the district. How many of these KBIT kits do we have?
We currently have twenty kits. And there are ten that are assigned to schools based off of numbers and data that we looked at as far as number of referrals that usually come from those schools, that are assigned to those schools. And then the other ten are at the district level and they do get checked out. But those happen, those are delivered within twenty-four hours, forty-eight the most.
But it's also contingent on the schedule that the counselor has and the timeframe that they have in their already overwhelmed workload to even administer the KBIT?
It's whenever they're requested, correct?
Okay, so that, again, that, the timeline, I, I think that we, we probably have determined that the timeline is, is longer than we would like for it to be. Another question I had was about frameworks. So how much of what we are doing as a district is guided by statute, policy recommendations, and then the Florida frameworks for K thirteen gifted learners? Like how much are we actually using the, that framework? The gift, the Florida framework for gifted learners?
So that is the expectation, is that the gifted teachers are using that framework as the guiding document for when they are developing educational plans for students.
Okay, and I have two final things and then I'll just let it be with the understanding that we have lots of questions still just in, or, or I, I think it's not necessarily questions but that the anticipation is that we would be able to enhance how we're currently delivering our models. And so I'll, the comment one is about the elementary enrichment programs because it says that it's designed for gifted, talented, and high-achieving students. It kind of blurs the lines because we're talking a lot about gifted today. I think that we would also agree that even our high achievers could benefit from some of the opportunities that are afforded to our gifted students. And it's possible that a high achiever actually may, once given the opportunity in a more advanced curriculum per se, that they might then show those signs and teachers would start identifying even more what they're able to do. Just the more opportunity for enrichment, I think the better. There was a statement made about elementary, or about students not being penalized if they're in a pull-out program. I have confirmation that at least two parents have pulled their kids out of gifted this year because their base teacher, I'm calling it base teacher, but the teacher was penalizing those students. So they're not actually even allowing their kids to go to pull-out anymore. Because if we, so if that's a district policy that we need to make sure that that homeroom teacher, whoever that is, is not going to require those students to continue that work while they're off in their pull-out gifted program? Because if we have parents choosing not to give their students that enrichment opportunity because the, the other teacher is penalizing them, that's not going to work. I mean, that, so I'm grateful that you said that today. I'm just telling you in real practice, out in the field, it's happening. So we need to make sure that we eliminate that. And last thing I'll say is, specific to middle school, again, that's where we understand and we've said in our multiple state legislator meetings, middle school is that sweet spot where our kids are just being dropped and missed. And I know that my kids could care less about science and social studies. They got gifted at Osceola at the time through language arts. That's not happening anymore because she's not there, she's a media specialist now. But they got it through language arts, which fit them a bit more. And then in eighth grade was science and that's just not an area that they care about. So I, I've had administrators at the middle school level say they would love to have the opportunity for an elective of gifted, but it's finding those gifted endorsed teachers. So whatever we're able to do district-wide, state statute-wise, whatever we're able to do, even bargaining, which we're already done with that. But to, to do something to incentivize these teachers to become gifted endorsed, I understand it's like a semester of master's level work, I get it. But that's what we're lacking in those gifted endorsed educators that we do have in the district. Kind of feel like their voices are not being heard because the majority of our gifted endorsed educators in Marion County Public Schools have been in Marion County Public Schools for a number of years. They've seen a number of folks, no offense, Ms., I've seen a number of folks in your position. They've seen a number of folks either as a gifted and resource teacher or not, because we did go without, or a program specialist or not. They've seen it, they've done it, they don't really feel heard. And so all of these questions that I've asked you today came from them. And when they looked at the presentation as it was uploaded, these are the questions that they had and several more that I didn't ask. So if our gifted endorsed educators who are in the field doing the work every day have all of these concerns, then that causes me as a board member to have even more concern. Because they see students that they're unable to, that we're using a gatekeeper of the KBIT and they can't go beyond whatever, whereas they know this student absolutely should qualify for whatever they're able to do and they're just not able to deliver it based on the gatekeeping that we've put in place. That just makes me uncomfortable as a board member. So that'll, those will be all my comments, but I think other people might have other things.
If I can piggyback off of that, because I, and we, we haven't even talked really about secondary. So, but in 2022, we weren't using the KBIT. There was a checklist. And then from the checklist, you got to a full eval.
In 2022, rather than the checklist, we had the GRS.
Okay.
Which was the same thing, it's looking for characteristics.
Okay, but we were not using the KBIT?
No, ma'am.
And so some, what, what is the GRS?
So the GRS is just a standard measure, looking for those same characteristics. So again, rather than, it was kind of looked at like a screener, but because eligibility is two-pronged, you have to have the majority of the characteristics as well as the IQ score. They just did one portion first. So we did the GRS. Before that, we did have the gifted and talented checklist. They would do the characteristics. If they met criteria on the characteristics, we move forward with testing.
Right, and so, so I think there would be value in going back to a mixed method approach. Because my first experience with gifted in the district was with the GRS and a checklist that went to, there was no gatekeep of the KBIT and then a full eval was given and qualification occurred. My second experience was a KBIT where we were twenty-five points different from a KBIT. My second experience was a K-BIT where we were twenty-five points different from a K-BIT to, to the Reynolds. So I, I don't think there's a one-size-fits-all, and having a mixed variation of strategies to get a child to full evaluation, I think what I'm certainly hearing is at least three board members seem to think there is value in adjusting that. But I, the delivery model in elementary, while it needs work, the delivery model, I believe, is more effective and meeting students more appropriately. I still have grave concern about vacancies and how we are, um, meeting the mandatory delivery of their minutes, um, having my own personal experience with that last year, and then obviously seeing it in my district with multiple gifted vacancies over the course of the last even just two months in District Five. So that is still a concern for me, how we're meeting that expectation. But beyond that, the secondary delivery model, how we are delivering gifted in secondary, specifically middle school, we, we haven't really discussed yet, and so I don't know if we want to roll this into a part two um, at this point, I don't know, but I really want to understand and have a deeper dive into the delivery model for secondary. I was on a six-period schedule as a gifted learner in, in middle school. One of my periods was gifted, myself and many of my other gifted peers electively chose that. It wasn't, um, I don't remember it being a choice given to me by my parents, but certainly it was an elective. And I, it was a prioritization, because we enjoyed going to the class, because if you create a class where gifted learners get to be gifted, they want to go to that class. And so there is still work to be done in how we deliver. It was first period, those are the memories I have, it was first period, we all went to gifted first period. And then I imagine that teacher taught other things, because I highly doubt there were a hundred and fifty gifted kids at a Popka Middle School. Maybe there were, but I find it hard to believe. So more than likely, she taught other things. I don't know what she taught, because I was only concerned about myself in middle school and going to my gifted class. But there's a way to deliver an elective gifted course that meets a unique set of students' needs and what they're looking to receive, and until we have walked through that path and really determined that none of our kids want that, I don't want us to presume that it's not appropriate. So I don't know where that fits into this conversation. I'm certainly down for a part two, if we want to roll this into a part two and kind of talk more secondary, because I feel like we've spent a lot of time in elementary and on the screener today, which is more of a elementary side conversation. We're not doing a ton of screening and eligibility in middle school. So that's fine with me, Chair, I don't know what you want to do, but I do think I, I don't want to close this chapter of this conversation until we really talk about secondary at some point.
So at this point, I'm going to defer to Mr. Whitehouse on that, because the ability to design a middle school schedule, um, with those minutes and electives is going to be beyond the scope of what ESE would do as part of this conversation. He's the academic expert.
Okay.
And we don't have to get into it.
No, I, I think part two is appropriate, I think, yes.
And I think Ms. Slaughter's here for public comment, so, and it's going to be probably about secondary, so I don't want to dismiss her, so we might win a listen now.
Okay, are we good, any more, yeah, any more questions?
Board member thrower to us.
Oh, sorry.
Um, yeah, there's a lot to unpack here. Coming from a family with two gifted boys in my midst, I have my own experiences with gifted, certainly. But a few takeaways that I've gotten from this conversation so far is, it kind of reminds me of our attendance thrust, you know? There's a hundred and eighty days in the school year, there's only so much time, there's only so many resources. So it's time and funding, funding and time, uh, that which gets, um, a defined schedule put to it tends to get done. And I think there is a snag, and, and a suggestion I would have would be, at least in Marion County Public Schools, that consider getting a, a formal timeline in place from when a, a teacher, or, or a parent, or somebody makes the request, that then that needs, something needs to happen within a, a defined number of days. And then those results need to be communicated within a defined number of days. And then, um, follow-up suggestions, I just wrote down a statement, like, as a parent, you know, if you feel the screening results do not fully reflect your child's capabilities, well, where do they go from there? You know, are there resources in the community that will do a, a full psych that is, uh, valid and, and not exorbitantly expensive, you know, where can they go? But, but truly, at least in the beginning, ti- uh, putting defined timelines in place for each step, because I remember, uh, when that ninety day and the sixty day was implemented, and the reason why it had to go to the state level was kind of like with cell phones, you know? It, it, it was happening some in some places, but not enough everywhere. So with a timeline added, it's moving. So those would just be some practical suggestions, um, that I would have, and just acknowledging that, that the relentless pressure that everyone is under, again, time and funding, funding and time, finding the people, having them certified, getting it done, and keeping it moving. So those are my comments, thank you, thank you for all you do.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Thrower.
Chair, and I just had one thought, real quick. If, if, to board throwers comment, the next step a parent has is they can always request an evaluation. Any parent has the right to request an evaluation. And when a parent makes a request for a what, evaluation, what are the days for that? Sixty, right? Ninety?
If it's, if it is a gifted evaluation, it is still the ninety days.
Okay, so at any point, at any time, a parent can make a request for a gifted evaluation for their child. And if upon that, if the child hadn't even been screened yet, we're then encompassing the screening into the ninety days? Or we're skipping the screener and we're going straight to a full psych?
So if that is the request, then everything would happen concurrently, because what we're wanting to do is still keep good data on the screening process. And so if I showed up and had a meeting, I gave consent, said, requested it today, and they had the meeting, and I gave consent, so the gifted characteristics, or the, what's the new acronym? I, the ICTR, um, as well as the K-BIT, and then if the K-BIT would just not be a barrier, it would then just be a step on the way to getting, but all of it would be done in ninety days.
Yes, or the alternative for a parent. So, so, so when a parent gets the results, like I did, the paper that says, your kid didn't qualify, the parent could then say, well, I still want my kid to be evaluated, and then the ninety-day timeline starts upon that request.
Upon the signature giving consent.
Yes, or the parent can go get a private psych, like I did, and pay privately for a school psychologist in the community to evaluate. Those are options a parent always has.
Yes.
But a, a child always has opportunity with parent consent for a psychological evaluation within the school system.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification, because coming from the, uh, ESE world more deeply, I knew that that was always an option, but I wasn't sure about gifted, and from the way the conversation rolled, it sounded like our job was done if they didn't, you know, make the filters. And then it was up to the parent, if they wanted to, to, uh, go ahead and get a full psych, which can be expensive and daunting and, and whatever, it can also be a lot faster. And I know that, you know, just from, uh, on the other end of the ESE spectrum. So I really appreciate that clarification, because it sounds to me like there's some very, uh, real-world examples of kids that, for whatever reason, the screeners just didn't capture it, but a full, full psych did, and then they're off and running, so.
Well, and to follow that thought up, Board Member Thrower, since Chair Conrad just asked me the question, and I pulled up the email I sent to my daughter's principal last year after the screening results. No, I'm assuming this is a letter template that we use, the screener results template, right? Nowhere on this letter does it tell a parent they still have the opportunity to request a full evaluation.
Correct, the parent is never informed.
So unless you know your rights, you don't know your rights. And this main, I maintain that this is a constant theme, not just in Marion County, but in public education. Unless you know your rights, you don't know your rights. So I obviously know my rights as a parent, because I'm an educator, and so I knew I had not only the right to an evaluation through the school board, but I also had the right to go get my child privately evaluated, and I had the means and accessibility to pay for that and make that happen. But nowhere on this letter does it say, if you don't like this. And I, I can understand why we don't do that, because we're opening up the floodgates for psychs that we can't deliver upon, which is the elephant in the room that no one has said today, but I'm really good at talking about the elephants that are in the room, so I'll just say. Our psych load can't currently take an influx of more psychs. We saw what happened when we didn't get the psychs done for the screeners, and then we backlogged, was that a summer and a half ago, whatever, a year and a half ago now, and we backlogged ourselves all summer. And so if we're really going to expand this, we have to add more psychs to our payload, because if we're truly going to do it, we have to do it. But as it exists right now, the system cannot take more psychs. And, and putting it on the letter is going to have more parents say, well, I don't agree with these results, I want my kid to get a full psych. But what is right, and what is right is to add it to the letter, because all parents deserve to have the knowledge I have as an educator. So.
Time and funding, funding and time.
Okay, with that, do we have any public comment? Ms. Slaughter, come on down!
Okay, so, Melanie Slaughter, um, I don't think the schools have the resources with the budget that you have.
All right, Ms. Slaughter, you got to move to the mic.
To screen every child, I mean, I just, I don't see it. I don't, I don't think it's, you know, and I understand that if, if a child gets screened, a parent may not like the result, and they may want to get them privately screened, or they want, may have the opportunity to. But if everybody that thinks their child qualifies, or they miss it by a point or two, you know? There's really not that much difference between a child that is a one-twenty-eight and a one-thirty, I mean, quite frankly. But if we gave the high achieving students access to those programs, self-contained gifted at N.H. Jones and things like that, I think it would take a lot of pressure off, because then, even if your child didn't meet the cutoff that they were close, they would be able to get those resources. Most kids are not like my oldest son, okay, who was, you know, way higher than the cutoff. And, but the thing with him is, is that he came in front of the school board as, as a seventh grader, because he was bored, and had taken Algebra One in the first grade on, in sixth grade online, and then wanted to take, and took Geometry in the seventh grade, and then had nothing at, at Howard for the eighth grade. So he found the Acel statute, and he came in front of the school board, and he said, I want my accommodation under this Acel statute, and I, so I got the, I met with Mr. Whitehouse, and he agreed to let him audit the class, which was just fantastic, because I had to drive him to, to Vanguard every day for a year, so he could audit Algebra Two when he took it online, because he didn't like online school. So, but the problem with he, that he had is, when he went into Vanguard, there was no thing for him in the tenth grade. He couldn't start his math classes for IB until he was a junior or senior. So he missed math, he missed a whole year of math in the tenth grade. So we have to think about those consequences, and the problem that I'm having with parents calling me is, their kids take Algebra in seventh, they take Geometry in eighth, and they miss seventh and eighth grade math. Then when they go to take standardized tests, all of a sudden, they've been getting fives their whole life, they hit fours and threes in math, because they've never had the seventh and eighth grade math. So we got to think about that, too. I mean, we push our kids and want them to, you know, excel and do everything, do all the things, and they need calculus for University of Florida and a lot of these big public schools, but they are missing math. So we either are going to need to accelerate them in the sixth grade before they can take Algebra and Geometry, or do something, because there are kids that have gotten fours and fives on AP Calculus, okay? And their test scores in math are horrific, because they have missed all of that in middle school. And they are having a problem now, getting their test scores up to where they need to be. And if their parents have the, you know, the money to get them tutored in math, they're able to pull those scores up. But if they do not, if they are poor, those kids are getting killed on these standardized tests and on these evaluations for state testing, which is something our funding is tied to, because they haven't had the seventh and eighth grade math. So if we're going to accelerate kids, I'm all for that, all my kids did that, but they, I didn't realize when I did that, in hindsight, that they missed all the, all that math in seventh and eighth grade, and that is what's on these standardized tests. So the parents have asked me just to bring that to your attention, that it's all great, that we're trying to accelerate kids and do all these things, but there's no, there's no, there's nothing in secondary school for gifted. I mean, you have the meeting, and that's what you have. I mean, that's just the reality of the situation. And in middle school, there's not, I'm sorry, in a middle school, there's nothing either, there's nothing either in middle school either. I mean, you, you take the class, whatever it is, it was science, you know, for my kids in math, which, you know, they generally were fine with, but it's not, it's not going to do anything. And because you have differentiated education in middle and, and high school, there's not the need that there is in elementary school to push them. You know, and if you push them too quick and too fast, then they run out of things to do. So I'm just saying, I mean, it all looks, and, and as far as the pull-out and everything, they've got to do the work that everybody else in the class is doing. I mean, they don't get a pass on homework because they're in gifted. None of my kids did. They went to flame, and then they came home and did their homework, because that's what you got to do. I mean, you know, if you're gifted, get it done, you know, quite frankly. I mean, you don't get a pass on work in school, you need to get it done. And they obviously have, are intellectually able to do it, so they just need to get it done. But, I mean, I don't expect core teachers to pass my kid off and not make them do the homework, because they're in flame, doing logic problems and projects and everything else, so that's what I have. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I didn't get a chance to speak on this one.
Okay.
You change after chair, though.
No, 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 I just didn't get a chance to speak on this one. Um, you, you did address some things, Ms. Slaughter. Oftentimes, a lot of kids miss the cutoff, and they're very, very close. Family members, um, or they're overlooked, because they feel that, um, they may be a discipline problem versus being a gifted kid. So we have to make sure that, how will we get these kids assessed, that they're assessed? And the, the other issue, and you guys have kind of danced around it, touched on it, if they're not my family, if they're not my kids or your kids, and they don't have the financial resources to get that outside testing, um, those kids are lost. We lose a whole group of kids that, that are potentially gifted, but because they don't have the financial resources, and someone has said that they're not there. We got to make sure we look at this whole thing in totality, when we, when we're addressing this issue. So I just want to make sure that, um, that came to the table. My kids, two of my kids, um, same thing, I had to fight to get them, make sure that they were assessed, um, when somebody said they weren't, and they were, so we have to do a better job.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. All right, and we've had public comment, is there any other public comment?
Okay.
When are we scheduling part two? When do we have room for part two, to talk about secondary?
Let me pull that calendar up.
Okay, but like maybe sometime before Thanksgiving break, we can discuss part two?
One thing I'd like to share is, there's a couple takeaways I heard from you all, formalizing the procedures, which is an easy next step, um, for us to have clear timelines for the process. Also adding language on a template, and the other part, and Mr. Whitehouse can expand on this, but we start scheduling middle school and high school classes really in January. I know that seems pretty soon, but that's what, what usually happens then, is we give students a, a sheet of paper, we're still old-school, because they get to take it home, they get to circle courses and prioritize electives. What we could do is, we could add that as an option, just to see what would the interest be. Something that you are aware of, and we've already spoken about this during our legislative priorities, but in, we have a six-period day, and when the students are trying to take the, these accelerated courses and extra Marion Virtual courses, it fills up quickly. And so they see it as, it's kind of why our avid option kind of fell apart in middle school, as much as we know that's a strong program and we want all students to do it. It took away an elective class. And so, but we, we definitely can explore adding that to their core schedule request, just to kind of gauge interest, and we can begin that process in January. Go ahead, Ms., uh, go, I'm sorry, Ms. Chair, Chair.
You're good. Talking about these follow-up next steps, that piece that Ms. Slaughter talked about, about kids missing the, the core math.
So we have, we know that there's thirty-four benchmarks, I, I might be wrong, I'm just going off memory there. There's thirty-four key benchmarks, when we accelerate our students for the, into Algebra in seventh grade, that they miss by, uh, missing out on seventh grade advanced math. So we've begun that process even younger, um, offering courses such as accelerated math. This year, we were not able to offer- This year, we were not able to offer that, we did last year. There's a challenge for that because the teacher has to actually have that middle school certification in elementary, so we're working on that now. But the other part I wanted to add to what Ms. Slaughter said is IB and Cambridge have a time period limitation on their diploma courses. So you can't take, so like the example she gave, I'll, I'll use one, like you can, you can go into, say you do Algebra and Geometry in middle school, your next step would go into Algebra Two or pre-calculus, but after that, you're kind of limited other than going into IB Math or ACE Math One. And so that is a, that is a challenge we have for especially the mathematics track and our diploma pathways.
It must be a challenge across the whole state of Florida.
It is, it is.
And Chair, to add, something that I wasn't aware of, that just Ms. Slaughter mentioned it, and Dr. Brewer kind of circled around it, but we started two years ago a pilot program at Ocala Springs Elementary, which is no longer a pilot program. So I don't know if the board is all aware, because I wasn't aware until I became aware a week ago, but the program doesn't exist anymore. So those kids are not in sixth grade math this year. So the program died after two years. So we did all of third, half of fourth the first year, half of fourth, all of fifth last year. Then last year, instead of taking the fifth grade PM Three, they took the fourth grade PM Three. And then they are, they're, they are sitting in advanced fifth grade math this year, but they are not taking sixth grade math, those kids at Ocala Springs. So I know that the board wasn't really made aware of that, and I, it became news that I was kind of made aware of by a parent sharing their thoughts with me. But we're, it flopped in part because of certification, because you have to have, you have to have a middle grades math or 612 certification to teach sixth grade math, which I identified as a barrier when we started this two years ago, because finding an elementary school teacher with a middle school math certification is not, not easy. But I also would, would dare say, should we not venture down the alleyway of, is it developmentally and mathematically appropriate for students to be advancing their math as early as third grade? Because what we're, I mean, the goal there was for those kids to get seventh grade math in sixth grade, so then they could start on the advanced track. But if we're not able to get them there, then what we're doing may very well not be mathematically best for them. So I still think there's opportunity for further discussion if we're not truly going to have in a fast-tracked from third grade forward program.
Well, while you're on that thought process, I thought that the best approach during that whole conversation was that in sixth grade, they would get seventh grade advanced math.
Correct, yes.
And leave off the third through all that part. So I, I think that if, if we've done away with the elementary side of it, the most important thing is that our sixth graders are getting seventh grade advanced math ahead of Algebra because they've got to get all those concepts in. My kid missed them, your kids missed them, like, they all missed them. And he almost missed even more because in sixth grade, his sixth, whatever, pre-algebra teacher, whatever, thought he wanted to be, and should have been in Algebra One, like in the second week of school. So I mean, you had the two. So I'm, I'm grateful we didn't go that route because then he would have gotten into middle school, eighth grade, and had nothing to do, and we weren't going to petition the school board back then. So I keep pointing out to Ms. Slaughter, but, so, as long as we still have that pathway going, where we have our sixth grade advanced math students in a seventh grade advanced math, and then seventh grade they're taking Algebra, eighth grade they're taking Geometry, then I think it still will solve kind of all the things. I appreciate the concept of, of rolling out an idea of a gifted elective to our middle school students. I think that would be interested to gauge the interest and see what that looks like. I, I think that that is going to be our challenge, though, is then how do we get more gifted endorsed teachers that are willing, or that we can pull in, just, that teach just a gifted class, it's not a science class or whatever. And so that'll be a scheduling thing that our APs will have fun with, but, and, under Mr. Whitehouse. But I, I appreciate that thought process. Part of the thing, and I was, I was hoping that Board Member Thrower would have mentioned it, we've had these conversations with our legislators, obviously. Some of them get our idea about gifted, some of them don't. When we met with Representative Groh, he specifically mentioned his kids went to school in Citrus County, and he didn't understand what we were talking about because his kids, when they were in middle school, had a gifted elective of, you know, and so he's like, I don't, that must just be in your district. And it's, well, maybe, but I don't think it's just us alone, regardless, exactly what I said yesterday in the legislative delegation hearing, even though the delivery model is different all across the state, we still believe as a board, pulling gifted out of the ESE statute and creating its own separate statute will then give us more opportunity to treat these students differently in the way they should be treated. 4.7% of our student population is not a small number. It, it may sound small because it's, but it really isn't. I mean, more than 2,000 students, I dare say we do a lot of other things for less numbers of students. So I, I think that it's important that we start considering what that looks like. Certainly on the state level, we're going to continue to advocate that we can get a bill sponsor to help us with that. But I, I, anything we can do locally, that's why I'm glad we're having our own local conversations about what we can do within the law right now until we get the law changed.
Yeah, just quickly, because we were both at that same meeting with, with Rep. Groh, and I think it just speaks to, and I did have something written down here and I just didn't mention it, but others did. Just having all the, the conversation, putting the cards on the table, identifying the, the gaps, and then the where do we go from, from here, I too am looking forward to the follow-up in, in high school because my experience has been whether they are ESE or gifted, the consult model could use some refinement. We'll leave that in that statement. And something I did write down is, you know, when you ask the kids, you know, or you ask people that know the kids, what's my kid really interested in? You know, they're really gifted, so what are they doing, you know, at home when, because hopefully I'm controlling their social media access or whatever, who know, you know, they're, they're doing some pretty amazing things, I'm convinced of that. And there are groups of students that are probably doing those amazing things, and that might help us identify electives that would be appropriate. God, I wish we had a seven-period day still because it, it just leaves more room for the fun stuff.
All right. I have one final comment, and Dr. James is, don't take a deep breath, it's just quick. Dr. James' comment made me think of it. When you do, when you ask the middle school students if they're interested, can we also survey, like, let's ask the parents, like, would you be interested in your child being in a gifted class? Because like Dr. James said, you know, we're not totally in control in middle school, what we're, what we're doing with our educational path, so just wanted to share that. All right, Rap?
We'll see that in a part two prior to schedule requests going out in January.
That was my point with that, yes, thank you. We'll schedule it before December.
Great, great. All right, with that, we'll move on to item 7.1, it's our last item. Dr. Brewer, you'll lead us into Workhouse Discussion, Workhouse.
And that, okay.
Oh, go ahead. Okay. I didn't know if we'd passed the torch.
Oh, I, I don't want to step on any toes.
Go ahead.
Okay. Just a report for the board on 9/25, Ms. Usher, Mr. Black and myself met with the upward team and their legal counsel. I believe the meeting was productive, most issues have been cleared. Left us with two primary focus areas. As of 9:30, we've received upwards P3 proposal, which is being reviewed by Ms. Usher and staff. Upwards, we also received their draft memorandum about, from upwards legal counsel about taxation structures and exemption structures, so we can narrow any further issues efficiently. We expect and are waiting on a memorandum, the final draft of their memorandum on those exemption issues, and would be able to make recommendations to the board soon, as soon as staff review of those areas is complete. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Brewer.
Okay, thank you. Jason and his colleague, I cannot remember her name, no, it was a lady, I'm sorry, flew in on September 19th to, and they did an interest, a gauge, to just to gauge interest at Westport High School, just one campus. They received some positive information, they're going, they've asked to come back, I haven't scheduled those visits yet. But they, at this point, are just gauging interest to, for us to be able to say that this is a need in our community. So that's the only thing else I have to add to what Mr. Powers said.
Okay. Anything from the board? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Okay, all right, we'll move on to meeting reminders. Next school board meeting is scheduled for October 14th at 5:30 PM, and then October 16th is a full day. We have a special school board meeting for early reentry at 7:00 AM. Then we have an administrative briefing and work sessions scheduled at 9:00, and then there is an ICROC meeting at 4:00 PM. And lastly, there is a town hall gathering October 16th at Osceola Middle School at 6:00 PM. So a busy day on the 16th. With that, we'll go into board comments. Ms. Martinez Young?
Madam Chair, thank you.
Attorney Powers?
Just happy Yom Kippur to all friends and family who celebrated.
All right, thank you. Dr. Brewer?
Yes, a couple things, thank you. We already shared, but we had the, we had the privilege of speaking yesterday at the county's legislative delegation meeting, and it was an honor to, of course, for, to introduce the school board members, all of you, to share our priorities for this year and also to go ahead and share our appropriations requests. And so we are excited that we're going to move forward with requesting $3 million for a plumbing program at Marion Technical College. And that is exciting because we know that there is a need and there is no other program in the county that's offering that service. So we're excited about that. I wanted to provide an update on the topic of elementary school searches. I know I shared with you all recently after the sheriff made a statement online that, he stated that we were not allowing elementary searches. So I just wanted to provide an update where we are with that. We have convened a group and we actually have our formal meeting tomorrow morning with this larger group to look at our procedures. As you know, we operate off of a board policy that is, that doesn't necessarily include or disclude elementary. And so our procedures right now only include middle and high schools for, for the searches. So we are looking at refining those procedures tomorrow to, to examine, like, what, what could these searches look like at the elementary level where our students would not be impacted? So I will, we will have that information and then I will schedule board briefings with you all, starting next week after those procedures are discussed. That's all the comments I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Brewer. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you. So essentially the way the article or the TV-20 report was, made it sound as if it was already a done deal and that we were, that we were already engaging in elementary, that is, in fact, the headline said that specifically. So that is not accurate information, dispelling all rumors, that decision has not been made yet. Because I, I know I have very strong reservations about even the consideration of it, but I will reserve judgment until you all get your committee together and give us more information. Two quick things, well, actually, yeah, two quick things. Osceola Middle School Sentinel Celebration is this evening, so looking forward to that as a former Osceola parent, as well as the board member representing that school. And finally, if we had more time, I wanted to try and spend a little bit of time on this thought process, but if the board would be in consensus to at least have a work session item on it. Because we were having legislative conversations yesterday with our delegation and knowing we're putting in a 2026 appropriation request, I know I made the statement in a board meeting recently about the potential of a 2027 appropriation request specifically regarding the repurposing of the existing Lakeview Middle School campus. If we were interested in at least pursuing what that would look like, I believe a 2027 appropriation request as well as a 2027 earmark from the feds would both be appropriate, but we would need to know exactly how much money we're looking for. I also think there's private donations that would be willing to help us convert that into an early learning academy for the South Side. But when I said something to Ms. Usher about it at the Ross Prairie dedication, which by the way, yes, that was wonderful as well this week, I said, I wanted, we need to make sure that the board agrees with that thought process before she even tries to start running some rough numbers. And so that was all I was going to bring up today, but we don't really have time to elaborate. If we had consensus, though, to say, yeah, let's at least explore what that kind of cost would look like, then she could start crunching some numbers and then we can have a greater conversation. But that's just up to the board to have that thought, that's all I have.
Ms. Slaughter?
Yes, looking at forward for our special school board meeting for early reentry on the 16th, trying to remember how far ahead we know if we will have candidates for early reentry.
We do.
Okay.
They've been scheduled.
Okay, great, because I know we had one scheduled a while ago and the candidates were, were not, had not met their requirements. So I always look forward to the early reentry meetings. And, I don't know, we covered a lot of ground today and I think we're trying to work towards getting out of here at 2 o'clock, so that's all I'm going to have today. Thanks everyone for their work.
Thank you, Ms. Slaughter. Dr. James?
Thank you. I was going to touch on the TV-20 news article. My request, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I generally am not that concerned about that. I would ask WCJB to retract or re-change their statement. Their statement is not accurate or reflective, I believe, of the work we're doing. And the title of the article literally states, Marion County Public Schools Now Allowing K-9 Units to Search Elementary Schools. And I find that to be not reflective of what I believe, certainly this board has articulated and what I believe we've been told by our interim superintendent. And so I find that article to be misleading and certainly has caused a stir in the community and it's been brought, obviously, to multiple of us' attention. So I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but if that's available, I would love for us to reach out and say, could you please change the title of your article or make a correction or something? Board, just one thing from my, obviously we have so much going on, there's been so much good work, but it's also been a long day already. So I just want to say one thing, about six months ago, I brought up the Reddick Basketball Court. We had a, I, not we, I had a brief discussion about that basketball court and trying to move perimeter fence to essentially give that basketball court over to the town of Reddick. Board Member Thrower had kind of mentioned that we should have a work session on it and kind of have a board discussion before we moved forward. The town was then willing to cover the cost of the survey, so it really would be no cost to the district to get the preliminaries done. But then it kind of died because there wasn't a group decision on adding the work session agenda item. So Board, I'm bringing it back to you, I was at the ribbon cutting for the Reddick Park, which kind of reignited the thought process in my head. I was there last week. Beautiful park, if you make your way to Reddick, it is a wonderful addition to the community. And honestly, it's a perfect place for it. God always has interesting ways how he moves that path. But if it's, if it's a pleasure to at least the majority of the board, I would love to just have a brief work session agenda item to discuss our desire to have the town of Reddick have a survey done on just that little portion where the basketball court is, and then we would understand how much it would cost to move the fence, the perimeter fence, and then all of the legal stuff that Jeremy would do to make it happen. But I would love to just have a work session where we can kind of summarize what that would look like, so that if we want to move forward in that direction, we could. So I don't know if there's at least three of us that are agreeable to having that work session agenda item, but if there are, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay. That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Reverend Cummings?
Some of you have already touched on the TV-20 article news report, which kind of made it seem like we didn't know what was going on. So, and I think I addressed it with Dr. Brewer the very next morning when we were at the Ross Prairie. So I too would love to see them do some type of correction to that article. It's very misleading. Be surprised when I read it and I'm like, when did we do this?
Yes.
You know, when did this happen? So definitely want to have some correction on that. My comments brief, we had a great, great presentation yesterday to the legislative delegation. I, I know they heard us because they've heard us before, so we expect that they'll, they'll take our recommendations and, and work on them. And then to the Ross Prairie family, truly a great dedication of their morning, those kids with the singing and all the stuff, it was just good. So we have our two new schools, both of them dedicated within a week of each other, and we're, we're glad about it, so, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Reverend Cummings. And with that, we have had a super productive morning, lots of great things happening at our schools and within the district. And if there is no further business, we will adjourn this session at 1:48. Thank you, Board.